Welcome to the January 22nd Town Council Budget Meeting. If you kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Paul, did you want to say anything before we get rolling?
Yeah, a couple of words. Sorry. I'll try to speak up. I got told I mumble. So I'll try to speak clearer. Um, so just want to let everybody know that Tuesday, February 11th, petition warrant articles are due in the Towns Manager's Office by 5:00 p.m. There are certain levels for each petition warrant article. Money petition warrant articles only need 25 signatures. Any other article besides a money warrant article, please look into the Charter because it all depends on what you want to do. If you get 50 signatures, it comes in front of the Town Council for a public hearing if it's a non-money article. If you get, I believe, 500 signatures, it goes directly on the ballot. So if you're bringing together a petition warrant article for this ballot season, it's due February 11th. If you're bringing a petition bond forward, it's due February 7th. Those are two important dates. The public hearing for the budget will be held on Thursday, February 13th, in the Matthew Thornton Room, starting at 7:00 o'clock, depending on what businesses the Town Council has before that, but such as appointments or resignations. But it should be right around 7:00 o'clock that the the public hearing will begin on the 13th of February. And then, more importantly, on March 12th, the deliberative session will be held at James Mascollo Upper Elementary School All-Purpose Room. That starts at 7:00 o'clock. And then finally, the ballot vote will be on April 8th, and that's from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., I believe, at three polling locations throughout town. And that will be April 8th. So those are some important dates in the next couple of months that we do have. Um, tonight, we have a couple of finalizing the budget hearings. I would ask the Town Council if we could table proposed issuance of debt until January 29th. And I'll talk about that on the 29th, if we are issuing any debt. But I would ask the Council if we could just postpone that for tonight, to the 29th. Um, the other thing is, is that the budget deliberations will begin on January 29th for the Town Council as well. So after the proposed issuance of debt, the Council will start their budget deliberations. So, um, and I'll make this announcement again at the end, but right now, if the Council, the budget sheets that I gave you on the USB are interactive, so if you make any changes in the Town Manager's line, it will flow all the way through the budget process. Um, but if you have any questions, you can reach out to myself, or Paul, or Sharon, and then we would run the numbers for you and have them ready for you for the 29th as well, if you, if there's any additions, subtractions, or just questions in general that you'd like Department Heads to answer prior to your deliberations, if you could just get that to me. Sooner than later, we can do all that stuff for you. I have a couple of items that I know the Council is looking for. Um, we're working on them, and I'll also have those before you on the 29th. I don't know if I'll have the compost P and L done. I'll try to get that done. But you asked for a cost benefit on the plow contract. And then there's some changes that we already talked about throughout the budget, such as media, the media fund going up and down with some of their adjustments that they asked for in the, in their presentation, so. But once again, if you have any other questions or comments, please, if you want numbers, please let me know. Be more than happy to get everybody the numbers, so. And I don't know if you want to start, I guess the library's first on the agenda tonight?
We have a couple of comments, so just want to check that.
I see no one from the public coming to speak, so.
Okay.
And so what was your question?
Do you want to do, well, I don't know, I don't, I don't have my agenda in front of me, and there's none over there.
25 welfare.
Twenty, okay. So today, we have Pat. This will be our last budget hearing for the Town of Merrimack. Pat Murphy is retiring on the 31st of March. A quick couple of-
March, January.
January.
Nice try, Paul. I really appreciate that.
I thought I had her.
She corrected you very quickly.
I thought I had her, I really did. So no, she's retiring on March 31st, uh, March. January 31st, March. Um, however, we are having an open house for Pat on Thursday, the January 30th, for all those who want to come and say goodbye to Pat from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. in the conference room in the other building on the East Wing, in the Memorial Conference Room. Um, really appreciate Pat's 26-plus years of service to the Town of Merrimack. And, you know, this, like I said, this will be our last budget presentation, so. Um, she's going to come back for deliberative session, though, I heard, just in case. A resident, yeah, we'll still call you. And of course, next to her is Sandra. Sandra is the new Welfare Ministerator. Um, and just so everybody's aware, I'm going to, I'm going to preface the 25th's apartment. It does look like it went up significantly. That is because of three individual reasons why it went up. Uh, one is because we went from having Pat, who was a part-time person, to Sandra, who's a full-time person. And the reason why we changed the staffing from part-time to full-time is because Pat came to me and said, this job no longer is a part-time job. It's a full-time job. She was spending, she was finding it very difficult to stay within her number of hours allotted to her as a part-timer. So that's why the Council came forward and we did make the change. So that's one major increase. The other major increase is because I decided to move the National Transit from General Government to Welfare. And that was the second major difference and increase in the budget. So the salaries were about $70,000. Um, the, um, the Transit was about $56,000. So those two alone make up the majority of the changes that occurred in the budget that was presented forward. And those were really outside of Pat's purview. That's why I'm talking to those right now. But Pat can answer any questions on National Transit you have because she is so well-versed, I might bring her back just to deal with that. So, Pat, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, everybody. And thank you for being my last budget presentation. It's bittersweet, but can't say I'll miss this, but I'll miss you all. The, um, so the budget presented, one of the factors that Paul hasn't alluded to is the fact that the unprecedented increase in assistance that has come to the Welfare Department. And this is just a sign of the times. The housing market, as everybody knows, is in crisis. Our vacancy rate for rentals is at 0.05. 5% is a healthy percentage. Less than 1 is a crisis. So we've been in crisis for a while. It's reflected in the amount of people that are coming to us for assistance. And the other factor is, is that the rental costs are skyrocketed. So what we're seeing is even for fair market rent, it's, for a two-bedroom, it's $2,126 for fair market. And I will tell you, the rents are much higher than that in some of the new apartments that have been around. And so even in some of the ones, older ones that we've had in the past two years, they've actually gone up like $400 for a two-bedroom in the town. So we're seeing people really in crisis over this with the amount of costs that's causing the rental costs come up. And we're seeing a lot of people who are renting beyond their means, these higher-cost rentals. So some of the two-bedrooms are, we're seeing almost $2,400 to $2,900 a month for a two-bedroom rental. It's just, it's just unprecedented. Um, we're not obviously the only community experiencing this. And actually, it's experiencing out through the country a housing crisis of this level, especially for subsidized housing, which we've kind of ignored for many years, and now we're in crisis over it. So what we're seeing is, is the amount of people that are coming to us is just, we've almost cord, we, from assistance from last year to this year, we actually quadrupled the amount of people from the two years before, based on the amount of people that we assisted. And, and we've almost tripled the amount of people who have just contacted us. And we've done referrals and other things to work with them. So it's just, there's, it's just been a lot. And that's one of the reasons that I requested with, when I decided that I just, you know, couldn't go to a full-time position, but this needed a full-time position because we were seeing not only what was happening here and that my part-time hours, but then it was being dragged into the other departments, which were my backups. And they were being very much overwhelmed with homeless calls and things that were unscheduled and people walking in and things like that. So anyways, just that could hopefully gives you an idea of why, you know, some of the things that have happened. So our housing line item is increased by about 23,399, which is almost a 35% increase. And based on the, what we've spent this year, we've spent about 64% of our budget. So a little over the thing. We raised our housing last year, too, to try to meet the needs, but we're, it's still just occurring. There's no way of really putting a hold on everything we've got to. As, as we well know, this is a mandated assistance. It's not something we have a choice. Um, if we have the need and people are eligible, we have to assist.
So Pat, if I can jump in real fast. I guess, what's the prerequisite when somebody comes to you? I mean, do they have to have been in town for a period of time? Do they have to show some, some type of residency or something to get assistance?
And that's a good question. That's the number-one issue, I'd say, that we have across not only just the state, um, just the general area. Because what happens is residency can be instantaneous, depending on the situation, because the law says whenever and where, if, if they are not even a resident here. So if they're here, but we do have some things that actually we passed at a legislative level to try to, to help that a little bit. It was called, there was a law last year, it was called Senate Bill 110. And basically, it required that if someone, um, like another community puts someone into our community, they're responsible for continuing that assistance if that person goes there. And if someone, you know, goes there, they have to be there on their own. They have to be there for 30 days. So, and that's basically dealing, trying to deal with the homeless population, which is very transient. But technically, if someone moves to Merrimack, rents a place in Merrimack, they're a resident. And therefore, you know, you know, hopefully, a landlord's not going to let someone just come in and, and rent and then need assistance right away, but it could happen. You know, it's one of those things, residency is not a requirement. They just have to have an intention of being here, like they're renting a place, or like, say, someone gets driving from, let's say, um, the White Mountains down to, back to Connecticut, and they gets, they get stuck. You know, and I've had this happen. Someone's wallet was stolen, and they had no money, and they had no way to get back home. They had to come in and apply, and I just gave them, you know, some gas assistance to go. But I mean, that's the kind of situation sometimes we have to deal with. But most of the time, most people are residents. They have been here for years, and we have to, you know, so, but we, we don't, we have to look to see what the situation is. But most of the time, the residency can be very fluid.
And I guess, how long can, is there, is it unlimited time limit that they're on our assistance, or?
They, according to the law, as long as they need to be assisted. However, that's where we come in. And the, the fact is that this is where you, if you spend the money on having someone who does case management, meaning that you're going to work with that individual to see what are their barriers and what kind of things they need to do to be self-sufficient, that's what we're working with them to accomplish those factors. So if someone has lost a job, of course, job search is going to be. If they don't have a job within 30 days, they're going to be doing work program within our town and getting credited back for what we had to pay for their assistance. It could be that someone, it becomes disabled. They've run through all their money, all their 401Ks or everything, and now they're destitute. They're waiting for Social Security. Okay, we may get a payback from their time that we wait because as we know, or you may not know, Social Security takes about maybe six months to a year to make a decision. So it sometimes takes a while. So there are different factors, and those are the things as, as what we do is case management, to try to work with people to see what their barriers are, what they need to do to accomplish. There may be other factors, too. All right, we need to look at, all right, well, have, have they applied for food stamps or fuel assistance that will reduce the amount we have to assist if they get help with those things and other programs? So these are all things that we work on and, and on a monthly, or depending, like if they're homeless, we work with them on a weekly basis to achieve different things. And in the homeless case, it might be looking for housing or doing transitional housing search, or the, there's a lot of factors, a lot of things that we do in working with people to move them to a state of independence.
So you, yeah, so you, like you said, are case-managing it and working, trying to get them independent?
Yes. The average month of, the average length of assistance is about two months.
Okay.
That's what our average is.
So what was last year's, um, uh, total for housing? The final number?
The, the actual or the, for the budget?
For, uh, well, I got, I've got last year's budget, but what was our expenditure on that one?
Hundred and four thousand, one hundred and seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
And we had some major cases where we could not, we could not get them into-
Shelters.
Shelters or their own apartments due to some of their-
Disabilities. Serious disabilities.
Okay, I see, all right. Thank you.
But for those that are at home, it's not a free pass.
Yeah.
It's, it's, they come to Pat, they have to show need. And then if they're in a, if they're homeless in a hotel, Pat picks calls almost daily to shelter, saying, do you have room for them? Do you have room for them? Do you have room for them? And when they're available, you got to go to a shelter. And if they refuse the shelter, Pat sends them a letter saying, you refused the shelter, we're shutting off your, your knee, your, your funding for, what, 60 days? 30 or 60 days?
Basically, it's six months.
Six months, so it's not a, I'm going to stay in this hotel.
Unless they come into compliance.
Right.
Meaning they go to the shelter.
Right.
Right.
Right. But it's not, I'm going to stay in this hotel for years because that's where I want to be. It's, there's a whole mess of criteria that goes along with it. We're just, we've just been hit. And the other reason that Pat alluded to also is that, I know we came out of COVID a couple of years ago, but there was a lot of money out there for rental assistance. And people got in upside down because they had all this extra rental assistance money. And then when that dried up, they needed to go someplace else. So that's when they turned to local welfare.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, so that's the, so the general assistance is where the, you're seeing some increase there. The other increase, just a slight increase, is on the social services to those agencies that did request more. We, we did provide only, but only 2.5% increase to those agencies. So that's the factors between the general assistance line items, the, um, the status and the position, and then the transportation and the social services.
Pat, I was going to ask you about the housing from the actual, but Pete, I got that answered. But the only other thing, and it's not even a big deal, I'm just curious. Big Brothers asked for $2,500, we gave them $1,024, $2,500, and $1,025. And then we come down a little bit for Front Door Agency, $4,000. They asked for $5,000, you gave them $4,305. How did we come up with the 0.5?
Um, it's the 2.5%.
Oh, so you were that specific, okay.
So, yeah, so what happens is, I take a look and, and some of these agencies have come in at different levels. So whatever they've initially asked for, that's where we, we start off. But, you know, some agencies, of course, are asking for large amounts of money. And, you know, that's not where, we're trying to help them to make sure they stay in business because, quite honestly, they do help us a lot. I mean, if I did not have the shelters, it would, we would be paying thousands of dollars more. But not only that, um, programs like Greater National Mental Health, I will tell you, I don't know what I'd do without them because it's just, you know, when I'm dealing with case management and trying to help people through their barriers, it's, 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 those are things that are just so critical. And so, but all these agencies have something to do with that need and, and where they have come from and how much they ask for each year. As you notice, some of the agencies don't ask for an increase. And so if they haven't asked for one, then we don't give them one. However, if they ask for an increase, you know, we have so much expenditure, like we had so much increase, we can't afford to give like high amounts and give them what they would like. Um, so we have to sort of make a cap somewhere.
And Pat, on that same note, what do they base their request amount off of? Like, how do they come up with the $1,000 or $6,500 request?
One of the things that we do is we request, um, um, request for proposal types situations where we ask them for information, what they plan on doing with the money, why are they asking for this amount of money? And also statistics, how many people are served in the agency totally? How many people are served within Merrimack? You know, we want to see that these are things that are helping us and helping our residents. So it is based on, we look at the proposal, we look at what they're asking for, too. There may be situations, quite honestly, where they're asking to increase their education funding, you know. But I'm looking at an agency that is also requesting increase in their shelter's assistance, you know, which, you know, and I, so I have to prioritize what is going to be needed more. Is it going to be, you know, the shelter, or is it going to be the education? Unfortunately, if we had all the money in the world, I'd love to do it all. But, you know, this is where we have to make priorities, and we have to sort of decide what is the most critical areas that we can make the biggest impact.
And then, the last thing is the, the transportation, the National Transit.
Mm-hmm.
Does the 24.5, is that where we had that extra? Does that include the grant that we had received?
Yes.
It does?
Well, no, the 40-
43, no.
No, it doesn't.
The 43 does not. We received the $17,000, or $20,000 grant on top of that.
Okay.
Well, actually, it was 15. We had to pay the-
I thought it came up to like right around 20 with our, with our covering-
With our contribution.
Yeah, with our contributions, right around $20,000.
All right.
So they are getting 20?
No, we did.
Like 17, and then we had to come up with some $3,000.
Last year.
Yes, yeah, not that, not this year.
Yeah, because of the, because we went into default budget, you know, it was a critical thing. Fortunately, I was part of the community transportation meetings, and I kind of told them what we were facing. And I was really impressed with the community step forward to really share. I had actually, South Eagan Valley shared part of their grant for us for one year. We had to go through DOT to have it approved. Um, they didn't like it so much because we're not a rural community, and that, that grant was for us, but they let it go for one year. So we were very grateful.
Yeah, absolutely. So that last is the, we've got that all figured out, the transportation-
Yes, actually, what was amazing was that they came in and only requested $55,000, which I said to them, um, okay, because the year before, they came in at 73. And so I said to them, I just want to make sure this is correct. And, but the thing was, I have to give a lot of credit to Tom, Tom, Paul McCally.
Arch, Arch 31st.
Yeah, I know. We, um, we, we had several meetings with them because we were trying to figure out, there was such a great need that occurred with transportation, and we were getting, there was a lot of calls. It was costing a lot more money. Um, Paul and I sat down with them, and we came up, we had to, you know, call, make some calls to some residents and tell them, you know, unfortunately, we can't go back in and make that extra run for them, which is what was costing us a lot of money. Um, you know, they weren't crazy, they weren't happy, but, you know, it did save us a lot of money. So that's why we're seeing the reflection of the lesser costs.
Great, thank you. Nancy?
Yeah, thank you. I just wondered if you, just for people that are watching at home, could explain what, is it available to Merrimack citizens around the National Transit system, or any kind of public, not public transportation, but, but the places that we support and that it might be available to the citizens here?
Okay, and let me just make sure I understand. So let me just explain what the grant, the grant is, um, and I don't remember, it's 53, it's either 5303 or 5310, but don't ask me which one is the one. But the grant is specific for a, for a elderly or disabled population. So that's what this paratransit is for, is for the elderly population. And since we are contracting with Nashor Transit, they are targeting all, you know, for Merrimack residents. So it is for Merrimack residents. However, it's limited because we, they'll only go within Merrimack and to Nashua, which is sometimes a problem because, you know, we have people like, and we fielded a lot, or I fielded a lot of complaints because sometimes people want to go to Catholic Medical Center. And unfortunately, we don't have that kind of contract to go there. And this is where, you know, there is a limitation to what it can do. But it is a, what we call door-to-door service, meaning that the people are trained on the bus to be able to help people who are disabled or elderly, but they don't go inside people's house, but they'll help them from their door into the bus and wheelchair accessibility, and then, and then help them get off the bus to their door. I don't know if that answers your question?
Yes, thank you. Is there a cost involved?
There is a cost. Um, it's $4 each way to go to Nashua, $2 within Merrimack, back and forth.
Thank you.
And we had to prioritize what services when we, when we set down with National Transit. So we prioritized getting to healthcare, healthcare appointments, and then disabled going back and forth to work. And then, believe it or not, beauty parlor shopping was lower on the list, but beauty parlor is in there. Beauty parlor or hairdressers were in there for these elderly population who want to go get their hair done. But that was lower on the list. So as we, as, as they go through, they'll let Pat know, you're coming down on money and the levels where we're at, we'll say, this is where we got to stop on some of the stuff. So they know it because getting out in the community for the elderly population to go get their hair done once a month or once every other month, we felt was a necessary for them to get out into the community and to be, feel like a citizen of the community. And the same thing, if they can't go to a grocery store to get their groceries, you know, not, not everybody loves using, what is it? Uh, Google Deliver, Walmart Deliver, all the, I don't, as you can tell, I don't, Uber Eats and all that. I don't use those apps, so. But, you know, using those apps to deliver their food to, to their door. So, you know, that, that was one of the priorities of going to that and trying to, their medication, picking up their medications at the pharmacies. So, but we had to prioritize it, and some of the other stuff fell off. Um, you know, going just X, Y, Z, go shopping at the mall or something. That, that basically was no, we're not, we're not taking it to the mall anymore.
All right. All set?
I'd just like to make a comment and thank Pat for your many years of service to us.
Thank you.
And many times, we've been before each other during these budget meetings. And I thank you, and I hope you stay healthy and enjoy your grandchildren and your retirement, and it is as good as they say.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Pat.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, April.
Before we move on, Pat, um, before we move to the library, I just want to do a public service announcement. Is that, um, you know, because we're in such a housing crisis, if it's too good to be true, verify, verify, verify. We've had several calls in my office lately of asking about, um, the house number, street numbers, houses, who owns the house? And somebody totally different is like a realtor or a X, Y, Z property manager. Just do your research on, on it. If it's too good to be true, it's too good to be true. It's not true.
Are people, people being scammed with money?
They're not being scammed with money. Without going into further ado, we have a woman who called, she's supposed to be in a house as of January first. The house was being renovated, the house still isn't being completed, renovated yet. When she called to talk to who owns the house, it was a different person than she's dealing with. It's funny because the person is actually putting them up in a hotel with his own money because the house isn't renovated. It's just, it's too good to be true kind of deal that I don't know what, where we actually have the police getting involved in this issue to verify that this is legit. Because it just doesn't sound right. What she was saying, there was a lot of red flags, like call the police off, call the police department up, have them talk to the police department, to have them research this to make sure it's, it's legit. But really, for the housing market in Merrimack, it's, it's, it's very expensive. And I've heard that from several businesses, it's very expensive. They're going for quite a bit of money at two bedrooms. So if you're finding one for around two thousand or under two thousand dollars or a house for less than two thousand dollars a month, verify, 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 because it could be too good to be true. That's my PSA, sorry.
Thanks, Paul. All right, next, uh, number fifteen, library. Vette's hanging back, huh? Oh, no, she's not.
Yvette loves coming before us.
I'm just thinking you'd rather hear from Janet. She's shy. I know, you have.
She's digging in.
Oh, well. Good evening, um, nice to see you all. So we're here to talk about the library's budget for this year. Um, just a few things I wanted to point out. As you know, for many years, we've been working on, um, staff salaries. The trustees are pleased to say we have instituted a salary scale, which we feel will help for future planning and also give our staff an idea of what they can expect, um, each year. Um, we also this year are contributing seventeen thousand dollars towards some of the materials and other things in the budget. Um, you'll see that our budget this year comes in at about one point six percent over the default budget for last year.
Oh, that's it. The only question I have actually is, you went through no fines, is it still that way?
Yeah.
So it's working?
Yeah, it is, yes, definitely. And I think people like it, so.
We also have automatic renewal. So when you check out a book, it will automatically renew if there's no hold on it twice. So you're actually getting the book for, I think, a maximum of maybe six weeks.
Okay.
So.
So that helps too, because people are every two weeks.
My kids' money.
Yeah, no.
I own a wing of the library for crying out loud.
No, thanks to Yvette for bringing that for us, but I think it's been really popular and it's been great, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Does anybody have anything?
I have a question, it's purely curiosity.
Of course.
Um, A three two one, maintenance building, line one fifty-four sustaining the library, and the note says anticipated trust fund.
Okay, so I'm trying to, well, um...
Now, if I'm understanding that, one fifty-four sustaining the library, right?
Yep, that, there's, um, two trusts that there, that's part of the seventeen thousand that we'll be putting forth. And one of them is from the Quimby Trust, that'll be a thousand dollars, and then the eighteen hundred is from another trust.
Okay, so is that considered revenue? Or is that, I'm, I'm wondering why it's there.
Yeah, so when you look at the bottom line and it says that we contributed seventeen thousand, we break up that seventeen thousand over different things, like we pay for the museum passes and that sort of thing. And a lot of the trusts have specific things we can spend them on, so Quimby does let us go towards sustaining the library, so that's why we can apply some of the money towards that, so.
We have to appropriate it.
Because it is a revenue because it's from the trust fund.
Right.
But it's put down as a...
It's put down as an expense, it's actually in its own fund.
That's where that confusion is.
Yeah, it's, you, all that seventeen thousand dollars gets put into its own fund, Fund Thirty-eight, and then at the end of the year, we reconcile Fund Thirty-eight.
I see.
As, as, for expenditures, and if they didn't spend the seventeen, it's against, whatever, it's like its own department.
So that's why it's an expenditure now.
Right.
But it gets reconciled later. Okay, that, that answers my question.
Yeah, we, we pay for that, but we're just acknowledging it here in the budget to show what we're contributing because whenever we have anticipated funds, we have to say that. We don't know if someone, um, damages a book and pays for it, that's unanticipated, that goes into the trustee account.
Very good, that's the only question I had.
Good, thanks, Nancy. Jennifer, nothing?
No.
Great, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, move on to thirteen, Parks and Rec. Matthew?
Give me one second here. Actually, while I, while I get set up here, um, we do have Steve Dembo here from the Adult Community Center, so I don't know if you want to hear from him first, well, even though his, his line order is a little further down in my budget, um, just so he can get out of here, or you want to just kind of stick it in order?
Oh, no, 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 let's, we'll let Steve wait. No, I'm kidding.
I, I think Steve was basically flatlining this year. They requested it. Go, come on up, come on up.
Thank you for yielding your time.
Yeah, no worries.
Uh, good evening, nice to see all of you again. We are, uh, flatlined in most areas. Uh, the one, uh, substantial change to our, uh, budget projections is in the area of custodial services. Uh, we've transitioned from a service located in town who had been our cleaning contractor uh, since before I took over as the center coordinator, which was in two thousand and one. So he preceded me, predated me, uh, in terms of, uh, his providing services. So he's, we've basically come to a mutual agreement that he would be depart and fade off into the sunset a little bit as he was cutting down his workload. And unfortunately, what that left us with was a position of hiring a new contractor and now we are, uh, paying two thousand and twenty-five prices. Um, we had a bargain for many, many, many years. Um, and, uh, for instance, we get three cleanings a week prior to, uh, with the original contractor that we had, we were paying him forty-five dollars a service, it's now ninety-five dollars a service, so three times a week. Uh, that makes an annual difference of sixty-five twenty in our budget. And years ago, we used to have cleaning five days a week, we pared that down to three. And we're just trying to analyze what really works and what's necessary to keep the building in clean, uh, and presentable condition. Um, one minor, relatively minor, uh, item that we did not have before, uh, Phyllis Ekins, who is our ninety-four-year-old, um, board member, um, who has retired from her position as treasurer, she's now our secretary. Uh, so we have a, a lady has come on board, um, Lisa Schultz is our, uh, new treasurer, and we're transitioning that and mechanizing it a little bit, coming into the real world, and we're going to have a subscription to, uh, QuickBooks. So she's going to be doing a little more automated stuff to make, uh, our reporting internally as well as to the town a lot more, uh, easy and, uh, and seamless. Uh, we also have, uh, a twenty-five hundred dollar, um, approximate, uh, estimate for some lighting improvements, uh, safety lighting improvements on the exterior of the building on the church side of the parking lot, as well as, uh, replacing a bunch of outlets, electrical outlets in the building that are functioning sort of. Um, depends how, which position you put the plug in, if it stays or not, so. Other than that, uh, for wish list items, uh, I have three things. One of them is landscaping, we've talked about that many times. We're kind of like a, sort of a stepchild in terms of, uh, getting attention in that area. The, the grounds are pretty sadly maintained, um, and we would love to have some more attention if, if that was ever possible, uh, in terms of plantings or just, um, overall improvement in physical appearance. We've tried to do our best as far as the interior of the building is concerned. And for those of you who have not been in the building for a while, it's very different than it was, uh, just a couple of years ago. Um, uh, there is a fence near the dumpster in the back of the building on the church side, which is falling down. Uh, that was sort of remedied a number of years ago by Public Works, but it is, um, in need of rehabilitation at this time. Um, also, the wood exterior, exterior wood surfaces of the building have not been scraped or painted in, I don't remember if they were done, but they're pretty sad. And the wood needs to be preserved, so, um, they're exposed, a lot of surfaces are exposed to, uh, rain, wind and, and moisture, and, uh, they really should be attended to. But other than that, business is great. Um, w- we get compliments all the time from people who rent the center. Uh, Mackenzie, thank you for the time you spent with us. We're now, we've moved on, we've moved on to Chairman Roth House. Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Um, we've, we really appreciate the cooperation that we've had, uh, and support from the town over the years as we've, uh, tried to keep this building, which is, I don't, I really know how old it is. It was built in eighteen sixty or nineteen oh five or whatever, I'm not sure. But, um, the building is in, is in very good shape, we have a new roof, thank you very much. Town of Merrimack, we don't have leaks in the ceilings anymore, and I pray that we don't look up and see things dripping anymore. So we're in good shape, uh, we thank you all for, on behalf of the board, we thank you for your help uh, and assistance and support over the years.
Steve, without the wish list items, how much are you looking for?
Say again?
Without your wish list items, how much are you looking for because our budget, I flatlined you.
Yeah.
Because we didn't get your budget until Friday.
Uh, my apologies on that. Um, I, uh, was waiting for Larry Vigetzzi to get back to me once I sent it to him, he's our chair. Um, and, uh, I, it was up until last week, I guess, that I sent that off to Paul. Um, so, uh, the bottom line that we had was forty-one oh eight oh, which is roughly ten thousand dollars more than last year's budget, which largely is because of the custodial services and cleaning and those, uh, building improvements.
Does that include your wish list items or not?
No.
Okay.
The wish list items are always out there, but we never put a number on them and we, we've never tried to nail down how we could convert a wish list item into an action item.
Okay.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
Can you talk about, you budgeted for painting, repainting of the building?
We have not.
You haven't, okay.
This is the exterior. So we, uh, the John O'Leary Adult Community Center Incorporated, the volunteer board of, um, directors who operates the building, we pay for all the interior stuff for the most part, unless it's a mechanical system or...
I thought you were talking about exterior.
Ex, we are exterior, which does default to the town.
Okay, so what are we looking at on a cost for?
Uh, I'm, I would estimate somewhere along with three thousand dollar mark.
Three?
Three.
For a paint job?
There's not a lot of pa, uh, wood surfaces, the window sills, the front entrance, everything else is vinyl.
Oh, windows, okay.
Windows are all vinyl.
I thought you were talking about...
It's vinyl, it's, it's a vinyl clad building. So we, the surfaces are relatively limited, but it's w- w- uh, winding, window openings and doors.
Is this a good, uh, Boy Scout Eagle project?
I don't think so.
No, it's stupid?
I would not.
It's too big for that?
I, yeah.
Maybe the planting of some pretty bushes.
Right.
Could be.
Yeah, that, that would be nice.
Yeah, the gar, well, beautification. I thought we had a football player who wanted to do something.
Uh, we had, uh, football players pull a lot of weeds, some around the church side of the, the building that were, uh, really pretty gnarly, uh, and they spent quite a bit, this is about two years ago. Um, and then we put down crushed rock in the area where we removed, uh, where they removed, uh, those plantings in the backside of the building.
Steve, send me an email about, uh, painting and we'll look into that, for that and the electrical.
Sure.
Because we'll get that switched fixed.
We'll do.
Because tho- those are on us, that should be regular maintenance that we look into. Um, yeah, on the other thing, I guess we'll talk about it as the council, see what they want to do. What about the revenues, are you getting more revenues?
Yeah, I, well, we, we actually, we had a, an increase in rental rates last year, um, uh, but very modest. What we did increase on a more significant scale was the amount of money that we're requiring people to put up as a security deposit. Unfortunately, there are some folks who really don't respect other people's property and we, uh, rent to anybody who's legitimate, uh, which I don't vet them. If they send in a signed contract and agree to terms on that contract and pay the, the freight, the, um, uh, and I feel personally that we're not going to be putting ourselves in particular harm. If I get a feeling, and again, it's very subjective, but I, basically, we rent to people who have signed a contract and pay the, pay the bill. Some of those folks are very respectful and they clean up and there were no issues, they get out on time, they communicate with me and the custodial person who opens and closes for them. There are other people who, let's say, are having a great time and they may not remember that much about it because alcohol is permitted under certain conditions. Um, and, uh, sometimes the parties get away from the control of the host and, uh, custodial person will come to close up at a certain time. Our, we close at eleven o'clock, eleven o'clock the building is vacated and locked. There are times when the custodial person will come, quarter of, twenty of, I've been there, I've had to do this and face people who are still partying, DJs still playing music and food is still around and it becomes a very ugly scene. And so we have increased the amount of money that we require, uh, potential tenants to post when they sign the contract to cover the contingencies of issues such as that, in which case they will lose their security deposit. So while we had a modest increase in rent, which we were debating about whether or not that was going to impact the, uh, desirability of the center for a rental opportunity, that has not shown one, I haven't seen anybody say, oh, you raised your rate by fifty dollars, we, we can't do it. Um, the security deposit is substantial. I'll give you, for instance, we, we charge, uh, rent by the number of people who attend any given function. And we have four tiers, one to forty-nine, fifty to seventy-four, seventy-five to one twenty-four and one twenty-five to two hundred, but I really, really choose not to rent for two hundred people, a hundred fifty is like the maximum. Uh, for each of those categories, starting with the smallest one, the security deposit is three hundred, it goes up to five hundred, then eight hundred and then a thousand dollars. So if, my, my feeling is, if someone is serious about renting it and the, the possibility of them losing their security deposit, make it more painful for them. Um, and, uh, for the most part, people are respectful. But then again, when we have issues, it becomes a very unpleasant situation.
Well said, okay, so, back to my question, what's your rental revenue for the year? Because we don't have the numbers in front of us.
Uh, I'm projecting twenty-six thousand, is what I'm projecting for this year. Last year was twenty-four thousand.
So that forty-one oh eight oh is net of twenty-six.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And we, you know, we pay, we cover all utilities, we pay for water, electric, gas, uh, phone, internet, uh, cleaning. Um, so all of that is on us. And, uh, it's, it's worked out great so far. Um, again, as I say, this is my twenty, twenty-fourth year doing it, so I, I'm, we're thankful for, for your support and, and I'm happy to do it.
Good, all right, thanks, Steve.
Anybody else? Speak now.
Sure.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, all of you, I'll be in touch with you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Let you get out of here, that's all you have.
All right, good evening, everybody. Um, Parks and Rec obviously exists for, to provide quali- quality of life services for the residents of Merrimack. Um, and we do this by obviously, you know, offering quality programs, fun and exciting special events, obviously safe, well-maintained facilities. Um, I always like to do a, throw out a couple of highlights, um, from the past year. Um, and for us this year, one of those came with our summer camp, which for the last five years, we've broken our own enrollment record every single year. Um, when I started... When I started here back in 2014, we had 750 total camper registrations for that whole summer, that whole first year. Last week, we opened registrations. I had 1,040 registrations on the first day.
Wow.
We just passed 1,200 registrations today, and last year, we finished the year, last year, at 1,340. So we're already like 90% of where we finished last year at. So that's exciting. People, people value the program, they, they like what we do, and so we're, you know, continuing to grow that program. Our other, the other one I like to talk about is the after-school program, which is now in its second year of operation. We are currently serving 33 children between Thornton's Ferry and Master Cola Elementary Schools. This year, we're about 30% higher, more kids than we did in year one. And just as we're getting a lot of like, last year was a lot of kindergarteners, so now this year, we're getting a lot of kindergarten and first graders. So in theory, they'll keep sticking with us as they go up through the elementary school. It is our hope to eventually get to Reed's Ferry. Right now, we have one bus that covers the two schools. We pick up at one, and then we pick up at the other. We can't get to all three schools in the, the amount of pickup time that we have with the schools, so it would require a second bus, which means I need another, you know, 20 kids. So it's one of those, but we're going to get there eventually. At any rate, as you know, our budget is broken down into kind of two main components, the taxpayer budget side, and then our self-supporting Recreation Revolving Fund. On the taxpayer side, our budget is mostly things that we don't have a whole lot of control about. It's health insurance, it's gas, it's electricity, it's water, it's those types of things. But I do want to just go through a couple of line items here, just because there are some changes. First one is under 81 oh seven, the part-time wages. Essentially, what we've done since last year is we've, we've shifted money around a little bit within the category, but the main thing that we've done here is our, we have a part-time year-round maintenance person whose job is to take care of the 19 buildings that we have at Wasserman Park. He is set at 15 hours a week. That position, two years ago, was 25 hours a week, and we went six months without, when the previous person left, we couldn't fill the job for six months. In last year's budget, we reduced it in order to save some money in, in other categories within this line item. But realistically, realistically, we need full-time maintenance help for 19 buildings. But alls I'm looking to do this year is bring us back to where we were two years ago, which is 25 hours, just to get us moving back to where we used to be, because there really is a lot to do when you've got 50-year-old buildings and, and kind of aging infrastructure there. And, and so the end result of that line item is an increase of about $5,300 over last year. The second one I want to mention, just really briefly, it's not a huge amount of money, but I like to talk about it, is, is our overtime account. The overtime account really is used for Fourth of July. The Fourth of July committee consists of me, myself, and I, and it gets really difficult to get people to volunteer on July 4th. I get a handful of community volunteers, but not many. And so most part, I'm pulling in my staff, my camp staff to come and work on, you know, for the holiday, to come that work that day. It takes us usually 12 to 15 people, just as a minimum, to, to get the start of the parade going. And one of the interesting things was last year, we had 70, we had 72 groups in the parade last year, encompassing more than 1,400 people, excuse me, which is certainly the largest parade in my tenure here, but probably certainly one of the largest in recent memories from anybody, and maybe the largest ever, I'm not sure. But it's getting big. It's a well-known parade. We keep, we've been kind of running second behind Wolfboro, which is usually known as the biggest one, so we're getting really close to it. I don't know how we're going to add another 10 or 15 flows to get there and where we'd put them all, but that's where we keep heading towards that number. So, so again, little bit of an over, increase on that line of them, only because the cost of, you know, the staff goes up, you know, and just trying to kind of keep up with inflation there. The, I don't see anybody here from MYA, so I, I can try to answer questions, but they submit their budgets directly to Paul and Paul. And then last, so the last thing we'll talk about on this side is obviously our infrastructure, which we have one project before you this year.
I do have a question for MYA. Do you want me to wait? I did notice that you decreased by 8,500.
He needs to give your microphone.
Thank you. You did decrease by 8,500 the request.
Correct.
And can you help me understand why?
They're looking for sponsorship. And when they came in to talk contract, they talked about roughly $5,000 to $10,000 in sponsorship for the fences, that they want to put additional signs at Martel and Reed's Ferry. So that's why I reduced it, because I figured the signs that they're asking for are nothing different than what they already have in other field locations, so for the sponsorship.
Okay, so that would be under the revenues excluding town grant, right?
Correct.
So the signage that you're talking about, am I, if I'm understanding you correctly, is not included in that?
Is not included in there. It's not included in there because we haven't given them permission to put it on yet.
Ah. So how could we? Go ahead.
I was figuring they're going to come back because they have made that request to come back for signage there when we were doing the contract negotiation just
Gotcha.
A month ago.
Right.
Month and a half ago. So I figured they'll be coming back and asking for the signage, which would help offset the budget.
Okay. So that needs to be clarified and finalized?
Correct.
Okay. So we can wait until, so by the time we do the final determination, we'll know the answer to that?
February 13th?
Hopefully.
Potentially.
So...
I just don't know, you know, I could ask them what they're thinking of, but they're, they asked for signage, and usually they get about a thousand of, if they put up eight signs at $1,000 a sign, that's $8,000.
What I'm suggesting is, we don't know if that, what they put down as review included that or not.
It did not.
You know it does not?
Does not.
Okay.
It's what they have now.
So it's, so it's reasonable to expect from them?
Yeah.
So can we see that if...
Yeah, did, I know you were at the meeting last night.
Correct.
What did they say?
If I had known that there was an issue, I would have asked.
Because I talked to a board member today, and he says, we'll work whatever number you give us. We're good.
That's not the point.
No, but I, I mean, they work with us in this.
I understand.
I can now call John tomorrow, send them an email tomorrow, and say, get on the 14th agenda for your signage, but you're not going to know what kind of signs they want to put up, but they do want signs there.
But I think if in fact they're going to get revenue, they should be able to reflect it here, which would justify your cutting, is my point.
Okay.
So we should at least let them know, by the way, this is what's going on, cough up the information or live with this.
Okay. Now I understand what you're asking.
Yeah. Because I think it's a reasonable, if what you're suggesting is accurate, then that deduction of 8,500 is, is fine, but it's not reflected on the other side. So if we could allow, you know, tell them, notify them...
I'll ask them.
That this is the issue, and if they don't respond, then so be it.
I'll, I'll talk to them. I'll send them an email.
Thank you.
Is there a reason why no one's here from the MYA?
They were invited, but I don't know if they'd...
Thank you.
Okay. So the last thing I want to highlight on this side is obviously our infrastructure line item. I have one project before you this year, which is the beach renovation project, but before I get to that, I want to just touch very quickly on the Ogara Drive Skateboard Park. About a year and a half ago, I had been told by the superintendent that they wanted the park gone this year, by 2025, but that, that was before they made the decision not to, you know, for a future SAU building over here at Brentwood School. But I feel like we're getting to the end of the lifespan of the skateboard park, and so we're going to need to make an investment, but we need some sort of agreement with them before we go spend $100,000, that it's going to, they're going to let us keep, keep it there instead of this kind of year to year. It's been a few years since we've had that conversation, so I just bringing it up since we're all here and, you know.
I think, Matthew, for me, if we're, if we're going to be doing something, if it's something that is meant to last for a long time.
Right.
Then we probably need to find a different place, because eventually, you know, it is school-district property, so eventually we should probably find that next location. So I don't know that I want to spend more than regular maintenance costs
Yeah.
for this, and I don't know if the maintenance costs are going to get to the point of where it's not worth it.
Right.
But, so that's, that's where I kind of am.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I'm bringing it up, and it's not on this year's CIP, but, you know, it's, it's based on that initial discussion they had with me last year, so...
Do you know what it, it's looking for, or, I mean, it's covered in snow, so that's a silly question, I suppose. Was there anything outrageous that was happening to it that you recall from the fall?
No.
No?
No, not that I can think of, but I'm just, like I said, trying to think I had here. And we had recommended another location, but that's, that can be a conversation for another day, so just something to keep in the back of your minds. So again, we have one project here for you tonight, which really has been kind of in the works for almost 10 years now that we've been talking about this, which is our beach renovation project. As you recall, this, the first phase of this project was done back in 2022. We had split the project into two parts in order to make it more affordable. And if you look at the, the screen here, obviously, you can kind of see kind of old versus new on that right-hand side of the beach when you're, when you're looking at the water, although the lower picture is showing the opposite, opposite view here. One of the things that we had done, when we had done that project, there was, there had been an initial plan to do handicapped accessibility to the water on that right-hand side of the beach. It was contingent on those, those, the state letting us take out those three pine trees that you see in that top picture. When we got to that project, they said no, and so we ended up redesigning the project and had to leave the trees there. So those three pine trees are still there in the center of the beach. And so that ADA accessibility piece wasn't able to be done that last time. And so we're trying to address the issue, you know, as we, as we deal with the left side of the beach. Again, that completed project, like I said, it's been coming up on three years now. It's solved a lot of our erosion issues. Obviously, it's a much cleaner, safer walking environment for people. And, and as you can see, again, in that top picture, the, you know, the left-hand side of the beach has the exact same issues that the, the right-hand side did. The, you know, we've got tree roots sticking out 30 feet in each direction, you've got a steep slope that's eroding away. As I said, the state won't allow us to remove those pine trees, which is causing a lot of, a lot of our issues here. The state currently only allows you to add sand to a beach once every six years, and you can only add 10 yards, which doesn't do anything in this situation. And so essentially, what we're looking to do here, oh, here's our, here's my tree root issue in the shoreline here of that kind of current conditions, is essentially, we're looking to duplicate what we did on the other side of the beach over here. It solves kind of, it'll have that same, that same perched beach set up like the other side will, but it, so it'll be perched beach, redefining the treatments wells above the, the beach to address erosion and runoff issues, which the other, we solved on the other side. It adds specifically a ADA accessible pathway coming in from kind of the theater side of the park, or the theater side of the beach. We will end up relocating one of our existing canoe racks. We'll end up getting moved so that we can deal with the accessible pathway, and again, provides that better access down to the water for residents. And then lastly, it'll be split rail fence at the top, like we have on the other side, just so somebody doesn't accidentally fall over the top for those, those safety issues. So again, we're dealing with safety issues with it, in kind of addressing the tree roots, and the trip hazards, the erosion issues, the, and just improving overall quality of the beach, you know, particularly when camp's in session, you know, camp tends to use the nice finished area, and sometimes residents get a little resentful of that because, you know, there's 50 kids in the water, and they're all on this nice, clean beach, and they're over here on this other side going, but I want to be over there, you know? And that's hard to do sometimes with camp going on. And then, like I said, dealing with the, kind of the ADA accessibility. Unlike the other side, we do not have to do any dredging of the lake, so we're looking purely at a land-based project. In preparation for tonight's meeting, I had Dawn and Leo work on revising our project estimate costs from, from last year's numbers to here. And as you can see here, we came up just shy of, of $100,000, which is what we've got in our line item. Now, with that said, and I know one of the questions is, that's in your mind probably is, can we extend this project out and push it out another year? Because that was one of the questions from last year. And the, the short answer is yes. Our initial project application expires in November of this, in November of 2025. We found we can get a one-time extension on the initial permit, actually gives us a five-year window to complete the, the renovation. But obviously, the, the downside of that is, the beach is going to continue to deteriorate. It puts off longer the amount of time before we fix the accessibility piece with the, and the, kind of the safety aspect issues of, of this project. So again, and then lastly, obviously, the longer we wait, the more we know, things never get cheaper. So it might be, you know, $5,000 or $10,000 a year, every year we push this out. But short answer is yes, we can do it.
So if I look at, on the digital one, if I look at the comment there, I think this started out at almost a 300K request from the department. Town manager says 100K, but the comment says that this line item's broken down into three requests. One of them's a pickup truck, the other one's a skateboard park, and then the third one is, is this beach renovation. I'm assuming what we've cut out of the department request down to $100,000 is just the beach request left.
Correct.
The, the pickup truck that was here, is that the same pickup truck that is now on 85 oh three?
Correct.
So in the comment, it, it says we can use this pickup truck for Parks and Rec in the spring, summer, and then the truck is shared with Public Works during the winter months. Is that for the same purpose? There was a one-ton on the general maintenance for 65,000. Is this, is this shared for the same purpose as that truck would be? Or is it shared for the same purpose of the 52K of snow removal on the general maintenance? What I'm trying to do is make sure we're not buying multiple vehicles where we could potentially combine the uses to one vehicle.
Currently, we used to, Parks and Rec used to have a 150, F-150, and they used to get it in the summer, and then Building and Grounds used to get it in the wintertime. That truck has gone by the wayside because of rust on the body and the frame, so we didn't pass inspection. So what Matt's asking for is a replacement of that 150 truck, but a smaller one. He doesn't, he doesn't need a 150. He said he can get away with, you know, a Colorado Tacoma in that, you know, Ranger in that frame. What Building and Grounds is asking for is another one-ton plow truck, because the one they have right now, if they're going to plow the parking lots themselves, the truck they have will not last. That was a hand-me-down truck from Highway that was on its way out the door. But since we weren't plowing, and we're only using it to sand the parking lots and do a little bit of plowing with it, it was, it's okay. But if we're going to start plowing the parking lots ourselves, what they were asking for was a new truck, new one-ton truck. So it's two different trucks.
So if we eliminated the 52K proposed contract for snow removal, then we would be required to replace that with the one-ton for 65K. And if we purchased this truck here, this truck would then be full-time Parks and Rec and not shared with DPW?
It'd still be shared, probably shared with DPW in the wintertime, because the truck, you lose your, your body.
Yeah.
The back body, the dump body of the one-ton in the winter, because the sander sits in there. So they would need something, they'll bring materials back and forth to the dump, the recycling things, and that's what, that's what they use the truck for. Thank you.
Peter? Yeah. Matt, you just said on the, the beach project that this was going to be a land project, there was no... that this was gonna be a land project, there was no dredging involved.
Correct.
I'm looking at your cost estimate here. On the third line down, it says pond dredge, which adds 25,000 on that list. So you can take that off there? Is that what we're saying on the bid price? Says common excavation 203.4.
I missed that. I only got this estimate yesterday afternoon, so I obviously missed that, that typo.
So I guess, yeah, I'm saying.
So yeah, there's no dredging on this side.
So then that's minus 25,000.
That, yes, that's my understanding.
Matt, you should check with Dawn first.
Yeah, I can double-check that with Dawn, but.
So I'm sorry, say that again?
I will double-check that with Public Works.
That would bring the project down now to about 75.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd double-check that.
There might be some dredging that might be needed further when you lay in the sand and stuff.
Okay.
So we should double-check.
Jennifer?
I will double-check that because I don't know.
Matt, can you talk a little bit about why the state has a say over what trees you can cut down?
Because you're in the shoreline and kind of wetlands protection area because it's five feet from the water.
Okay. And my second question is, do you have any, like, usage stats on the beach in the summertime? You talked a little bit about conflict with when camps are going on, but.
I do.
Is there kind of overall usage issues where we have not enough space?
And, and we don't get a lot of those issues. I mean, most, during, when camps in session, usually we get families with small children at the same time, and it's not usually a big deal. But most of our use, we track usage on the weekends when we have our weekend park attendance. And for the last four or five years, we've been averaging, it's, it's all weather dependent, but on a decent weekend, you know, you'll get a couple hundred people a day, you know, two, 300 people a day down there. It's gone up slightly in the last couple of years, certainly since we've improved conditions down there, but not dramatically so.
So does 200 to 300 people fill the whole new section?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there's enough room. It's not like we're like arm-to-arm, but it's, it's busy if you go down there on a, on a hot Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Matthew, did they know, D, I'm imagining D as who, who you speak with when it came to those pine tree removals. Did they know that there's gonna be, that the work that was gonna happen? Because it's for erosion, I would have imagined. They don't want it to wash away. So we're gonna be taking care of that. That still didn't matter?
It didn't make a difference, and, and back when we did the first phase of the project, Dawn and I, yeah, Dawn and I went up to the state, and this was like right after COVID, and sat there and argued with them for hours about safety versus bank erosion, and, and they didn't care. And they said no.
Matt, refresh my memory on the trees, though. What was, um, was it that we couldn't cut them down or we couldn't take out the roots?
We.
Thought we could cut them.
If you, if you cut out the roots, the trees are gonna die anyway.
I thought, I thought you had to leave the root on it.
I believe so, yeah.
And that was the problem, stabilization. It was the roots.
Yeah.
It wasn't so much the trees itself, but the roots and, and the shoreline protection.
Right, but again, we would be shoring it up. It'd have the, what do you call the walls?
Yeah, retaining walls on it. I get it, but they're, they're going through their book and they're saying XYZ.
Maybe Nancy can do something about that. Nancy?
Thanks. Matt, I just wondered, have we had any problems with cyanobacteria?
No, we get milfoil on the lake, which Conservation Works is a, a company that comes in five or six times a year that does suction harvest diving on the lake. And we actually work with the Lake Association that there, there's lake volunteers that will come out and they'll mark the milfoil plants. And then every four or five weeks, those divers will come out and, and do that. But we've been fortunate not to have cyanobacteria here.
Do we, do we, like, week test routinely?
We, we test the, the, the lake every, we test the swimming area, I should say, every week during the summer.
Great, thank you.
Okay, uh, right, moving on. Yep. On general budget, any? Okay.
I think we're good.
Okay.
No, I just wanted to make sure everybody's questions were answered on Parks and Rec before we move on to the revolving fund.
Thought maybe you were trying to pull one over on us. Are you like ready to move on or?
We, we try to make it easy.
$41,000 for John O'Leary, I guess.
Yeah. All right, so let's, um, the other side of our budget is obviously the Recreation Revolving Fund, which is a self-supporting fund that was established nine years ago at town meeting. And essentially, it's how we operate all of our programs. Instead of me coming to you every year and saying, okay, I need 50,000 for this program and 20,000 for this program, and tend to do this, you know, back, back before we had this fund, that was the way things operated, and I had to ask kind of a year and a half and go, okay, I'm gonna need $37,000 for salaries and $20,000 for supplies for this program, you know? And it was really kind of stunted our growth. We were only running 20, 25 programs a year back then. And, and so we got this fund approved back then. And so looking at, just, we'll start with last fiscal year. We served just shy of 4,000 participants in all of the 320 different programs, classes, and events that we offer, or programs and classes. The, these numbers don't include statistics on the special events, but most of our Halloween, Winter Carnival, those types of events, we're drawing 800 or 1,000 people event plus at each of those events. So the number really is higher. And then, you know, in calendar year 2024, that just ended up, we ran 400 different classes last year. And so we're kind of slowly growing as things become more popular and, and as we expand things. And, and some of the things are programs that we run in-house, obviously, summer camps and after-school programs and parents' night out and those things. And then there's a whole other segment of programs that we use independent contractors, because obviously, we can't run everything ourselves. And it might be archery, and he might teach here for us on Tuesdays, and he's in Bedford on Wednesdays, and in Nashville on Thursdays, or whatever it happens to be. And we've got a whole slew of those contractors that we set up agreements with, obviously. And, and so on the screen here is, is kind of a summary of last fiscal year's programmings, kind of number of people served, kind of incomes and expenses, and kind of where we netted for some of those things. And even though they're not programs per se, I did include at the bottom here kind of function hall rentals, as well as the community garden. The function hall rentals, we did, you know, 25 rentals last fiscal year between September and May. We don't do June and July and August because our space, one is not air-conditioned. And frankly, it's too hot in the building in the middle of July. We've tried it a couple of times, and it was a disaster. And two, it, um, our community garden, which we took over three years ago, we've sold out the last two years, or nearly sold out. We've had, we have 100 plots, and we've sold 98 plots the last two years. So, um, you know, part of it has been word of mouth, and, and people really enjoy the program, so.
Matthew, do you, um, the community garden, is, uh, is there a cost for tilling it? I think they, you know, what do you call it, rototill it up, whatever?
We haven't done rototilling in, in two years. One of the requests we had from the gardeners after last year was, they actually preferred us not to do it every year because a lot of them are bringing in like their own topsoil and stuff, and if we rototill it, it wipes away what they brought in and stuff. And some, a lot of them like to, you know, plant, plant stuff in the fall, leave it, you know, leave their fencing up and everything, and then they come back in the spring and they're able to, because we kind of, we give the, them the option to return each year and kind of have first right of refusal. So like coming into '25, I think probably about 50% of them are returning from last year to this year. And so they've kept their fences up, which is nice for me because now I don't have to spend three weeks tilling the soil and restaking out all the plots, and which takes hours and hours and hours, so. So we haven't done it in a couple of years. We'll probably do it after this coming year, I'm thinking, just because it'll have been a couple of years, but it's been doing really well.
Yeah, because I remember previously that used to, it was a regular occurrence. I didn't know it wasn't desirable, so that works out well.
Yeah.
And then, Matt, on the after-school program, do you have a goal of prospective students that you hope will participate this year, seeing that the net revenue was in the negatives?
That was last fiscal year, and that was our first year, mind you. We are, um, you know, we're already, like I said, we're about 30% higher than we were last year, so I don't expect us to be in the negative this coming year, or in this current fiscal year. I'd like to be, I'd like to be around 40 kids a day, somewhere in that ballpark, maybe even 50. Like I said, at some point, I would like to be able to get over to Reed's Ferry too, just to serve those. And I actually heard the other day Reed's Ferry is now the largest school, I think I heard somebody told me. So I'd like to be able to support them as well if there's, if there is that need, so. But again, it's gonna require another bus, so I'm gonna need, you know, 20 kids just to serve, to sign up, just to serve that school. So it's a, we're not sure yet there yet. But I'm, I'm anticipating we should at least break even, if not do a little better this year. We have had some savings, as you know, we've, Hannah, who is our camping after-school coordinator, left us in September to join the Air Force, who she actually just shipped out to Japan last week. We've had some challenges in filling that role. I've done 33 interviews over the last six months for the same, and we keep, get somebody that accepts the job, and then they ghost us. Or we go through the process, and then we go through all the background checks, which takes about three and a half weeks, anyone. And they say, no, I changed my mind. And, and a lot of it is pay, I think, and we've raised the pay a couple of times. We just made an offer last week to somebody. She's accepted. Fingers crossed, because I'm, after five rounds of interviews, I'm really tired of interviewing. So especially as we're going into, into the summer and already, you know, camp registration and all that stuff. So, um, but we have had some savings there too, which helped us, helps the bottom line certainly this year too. So, um, at any rate, um, moving on, the, with all of the programs that we run, and, and for those who've been on the council for a while know this, but again, more for the benefit of the, the people at home. For all the programs we run, aside from the direct costs of operating those, you know, salaries, supplies, you know, those types of things, we get charged a town administrative cost. It's a portion of kind of my salary, HR's time, payroll's time, purchasing's time, you know, for that extra workload for us running camp and some of these other programs. And so each year in the, in preparing the budget, the finance director gives me a number and says, okay, you need to, aside from direct costs, you need to recoup this year, this coming year, it's $52,961. And so what we do, and, and you'll see here on the slide, is we break out that bud, that, that $52,000 based on kind of overall percentage of the budget, and kind of how much of our time does it take to run some of these things? Camp is obviously our biggest program. It shares, it takes the lion's share of the program, but I obviously don't want to charge all of it off to camp because that allows us to keep camp affordable. You know, this is the first time this year, for example, we're able to, we've, we've had like 20 and $30 cost increases on camp the last three years. This is the first time in four years we've been able to hold things steady and not raise rates because we're trying to be affordable for residents. And so again, this kind of breaks down by category, what we're expecting to, how we're, the categories of programs and how we're expecting to generate those, those, that $52,000. And, uh, yeah, and I guess that is everything I have. Questions?
Matthew, how do we compare to other camps? Are we still similar to them?
We're, we're affordable, but we're on, we're on the lower end in the, in the grand scheme of things. In terms of, certainly in terms of prior camps. Our biggest competitor, obviously, is Cape Sergeant. And we're, in, in some aspects, we're cheaper, but in other aspects, we're not. The, the Y has two rates. Instead of resident, non-resident, they have, if you own a Y membership and you're paying for a Y membership, you pay one rate, and it's probably about $30 cheaper than, per week than what we're charging, which is 3, 320 this year. But if you're not a member, their rate's like $400 if you, if you're not paying for that family, that family membership. So we're kind of in the middle, but we also do things like lunch, which they don't do. We provide that hot lunch every day, which parents absolutely love, not having to make their kid lunch every day. We've been trying to get back, we used to always do swimming lessons at camp because swimming's an important part of camp. And note teaching kids how to swim. One of the challenges we ran into during COVID was because our camp did not run in 2020, anybody that didn't teach swimming lessons that summer, they lost their certification. The Red Cross didn't grandfather people in for an extra year. And since then, up until last year, nobody was offering the class, the instructor class. And it's, because it's usually the same instructor that teaches lifeguarding, that teaches water safety instructor. And there's such a nationwide shortage of lifeguards that they're all focused over on, on the, uh, the, the bigger demand of lifeguard training. We've been fortunate the last couple of years to have a pretty good, solid crew, and we haven't had too much trouble finding guards. We're hopeful this year, like probably middle of last summer, they were just starting to release water safety instructor classes. So we've built into our camp budget this year to hopefully bring back swimming lessons, assuming I can find somebody and get them trained up and, and be able to bring that back too, which also gives us an advantage over the Y in what they offer.
Anybody have anything? All right, thanks, Matthew. Appreciate it. All right, next, 03, fire. All right. Check the thermostat when you go by, will you?
Don't tell me it's getting cold.
Yes, we're all cold. It's time for you to step to the plate. Just goodness, I'm sitting on my hands because it's so doggone cold.
We have a lot of wimps on the, they're all freezing. Oh, see, you have a kindred spirit here.
You can probably go ahead.
Would you like me to wait till Council Albert comes back?
No, no.
You can go ahead.
Okay, all right, good evening all. We'll go over the fire department budget. Again, feel free to ask any questions that you have as we go through this. Overall, I'm a realist, so my budget was not much more than last year, other than a few key areas, which, again, I don't really have a lot of control over. So costs for supplies and equipment. Manufacturers and vendors are, you know, costs go up every year. Sometimes they go up a couple of times a year, which we've spoken quite a bit about over my career here so far, so. Wages for the basic fire department, those increases are due to contractual obligations that we have with our folks. If you do have the electronic version, you'll see on some of those where they're earning different incentives based on what they do in our organization, so that's what those are. On the overtime for supervisory, did you want to wait and talk about overtime as a collective at the end? Because that's kind of gonna be a subject all in of itself, so.
Good idea.
When Paul and I spoke earlier today, we thought it might be best to wait till the end.
Yep.
Let's talk about overtime, if you're okay with that. Okay. So then we'll move to wages part-time. You'll see an increase there of about $26,000. The reason for that is we're adding a position for the part-time EMS coordinator. That's a position I've been working with the town manager on since I got here. Each organization that I previously worked for, we've had an EMS coordinator whose primary function is to assist and oversee EMS operations. Now, I know we have an assistant chief of EMS and operations, obviously, but the workload for that individual is extensive, given the makeup of our department being so young now. The focus for training is huge, and he, that one person just can't do it all. And track all the certifications, and track all of the other things that need to go on for the EMS part of our operations. So in speaking with the town manager, again, we've been working on this for a couple of years now, and then this past year, we've really tried to move it along to try to make it happen. I'm not looking for someone full-time. I don't think we need a full-time position, but someone to assist the assistant chief of operations would be huge. We created a job description for that, which when the town manager's ready, he'll present that to you folks for consideration. But we wanted to open the discussion, or at least give you an idea of what we're looking to do in our organization with this EMS coordinators, part-time, 24 hours a week, nothing dramatic. But it certainly would be a huge help for our organization. Plus, right now, we outsource all of our EMS training. We'd like to try to do more of that in, in-house versus outsourcing it. While, you know, the instructor that we have that takes care of that outside training is a great person, does a great job. It's hard for them to understand some of the weaknesses that we have in our organization. And if we had our own EMS coordinator doing our own training, we can look at what we're doing in the field, what weaknesses we see, and then how do we develop programs to improve those weaknesses that we find. Again, while the outside source could certainly do it, I'm not sure they'd get the sense, because they're not on the calls that EMS coordinator would be taking, would actually see firsthand what the weaknesses might be. So I truly believe it's an important position to have in our organization. So, you know, we're looking for your consideration to try to make that work.
Chief, just a, you said twenty-four hours a week, so just a little bit over a half FTE?
Yep, yes. Any questions on that spot before we move on?
Is, is that, pay-wise for, is that what we're looking at, pay-wise for half FTE? Would that be the same, is there a difference in the pay between the trainer and say, an EMT or a firefighter? Is there a huge difference, or is that a minor difference? And if we said we were going to add a half FTE to anywhere in the firefighter force, is it about roughly twenty-five thousand a year? Is that a good number to use?
If you're going with a full-time professional, you have other benefits on top of it.
Not full-time, part-time.
Part-time?
Yeah.
Twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yep.
That's basically what we did is the, we took what our part-time paramedic makes and just ran that number of twenty-one dollars times the hours.
Okay.
So it could be more.
Pay is very comparable to a paramedic.
Could be more, could be, yeah, it's a, actually, the position, even though it's an EMS coordinator, you would want somebody, paramet- you would want a paramedic in the position, because they'd be overseeing paramedics as well. So you'd want a paramedic.
Okay.
But the chief can speak more to that.
Yeah, I mean, if we look at just the line above, so the part-time fire inspector, right, we need certain credentials to have that position, right? So his hourly rate was thirty-four seventy-one. Now, he's been there a couple of years now, and that's why that rate is so high. But in order to start the position, you know, again, I don't want to stick a shock anybody, but I need the position. So we've spoken to a couple of people that might be interested in the position, and they were okay with starting off with the twenty-one, understanding that we will work to improve that hourly rate. Because again, once we establish the position, the person proves their worth and their capability and shows some production, then we can work on a salary adjustment, but we needed to start somewhere. And we didn't think it was right to snub the part-time paramedic who comes in at twenty-one dollars an hour and then the EMS coordinator. You know, brand new, we never had it before. We just didn't think that that was right, so we, we kept it the same, with the understanding that we'd look to go forward with it.
Yeah.
If approved.
Always a big fan of training.
Yep, absolutely.
What we didn't do with this position in this first year is actually remove the training dollar amount, because that's separate. So we left the outside trainer that the chief talked about in this budget.
Yep.
But going forward, as this person becomes more comfortable and develops a training program for the department, we'd start reducing that and using, maybe possibly using that money to increase the salary dollars of the position.
Okay. And we're going to call that out when we go through the budget, that outside training piece?
Yeah, it's kind of, I'll, I'll try to call it out, it's kind of hidden away.
It's in oh-one oh-three eighty-three fifty-two, it's buried into that.
Yep.
Training portion, education and training.
You all set?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll skip the next section. EMS training requirements, level funded, all of those things, we didn't change anything for that. That's just the hourly rates that we have to pay for different classes that we need to have the guys attend. The other section, social security, retirement, health insurance, dental insurance, I have no control over those line items. The next one that you would look at would be the office supplies, we left that the same. When you look at the next item, eighty-two oh-two maintenance supplies, we put in a five percent increase for each of those. Specific line items each, but if you read the bullet that I, or the note that I attached, we have historically gone over budget with that particular line item every year. Supplies cost what supplies cost, I mean, I still need to buy janitorial supplies, light bulbs, miscellaneous hardware for things that break within the, so I mean, I have no, no control over that. But again, we're doing our best to maintain costs the best we can. So in working with the town manager, we came up with a number that we think will work. The next one is operating supplies. Again, we're, we're ballparking a five percent increase, but I, it's not, I'm not going to be shocked if sometimes there's an eight percent or a twelve percent on some of these medical supplies. It is what it is. The other thing we're noticing is one of the hospitals that we use for IV catheters, they've changed the style that they are supplying us, and some of our staff are not comfortable with that particular new style. And I don't blame them, I mean, since I've started in my career, I think I've seen at least half a dozen to a dozen different IV catheter styles. And with every change, it's hard to get used to using that particular catheter. So we may end up having to purchase more on our own, so that our staff feels comfortable and can actually, you know, get IVs out in the field like they, they truly need to. So we may see some increases on some of the expenditures for that, but that's how that goes. Any questions on that so far? No. Okay. Uniforms and personal protective clothing, so again, some of those items are just increases from vendors and distributors. I'm sure that Counselor Murphy's going to ask me about PFAS and our turnout gear. I haven't had a chance to look it up, but as of last year, there was not one manufacturer that could totally be PFAS-free. So anybody that's making turnout gear, they don't have a totally PFAS-free garment yet. The last level of protection was, had failed testing, it was supposed to be retested in December, and I don't know if it passed or not. But I can tell you that the turnout gear that we've been purchasing since I've been here, and this is from the vendor that we deal with, there's only one layer of the garment that still has some levels of PFAS in it. All of the other levels of the garment do not. Then we've also instructed our staff, if you don't need to be wearing the turnout gear, don't wear the turnout gear. Which is again, a recommendation from the manufacturers and the vendors. So we've taken every precaution that we can to keep the PFAS contamination as low as possible. If a PFAS garment comes forward, I will certainly look into it, but I'm one of those, it's a very cautious person. I don't like to be the first one, as I'm sure the big press article was conquered, was buying all of their staff brand-new PFAS-free gear. It doesn't exist yet, so I will wait a little bit to make sure that, you know, garments and systems function and will meet standards in testing, because I don't think jumping in quickly is the right way to, to operate, so. Yes.
Thank you. And to that point, I, I expect that it will, it will be expensive. So is there a plan to sort of, plan for that so that when you need it for everybody?
We, we can, yes. And I think we've spoken before, I mean, that'll be something that I think, you know, you as a council and me as a department head with the town manager, will probably have to sit down and financially figure out what do we want to do. I don't think it's prudent to purchase, let's just say, fifty sets day one. Well, in a number of years, you're going to have to replace all fifty sets again, and that's a big chunk. Is there some way that we can do a large percentage and then purchase the rest as we go over time and then get into a replacement cycle? Because again, each guy's going to need, or each person is going to need at least two sets. So we're not talking, you know, right now, we're about thirty-five hundred dollars a set. I would suspect ballparking a PFAS-free garment is probably going to be close to four or five thousand dollars a set. So that's a, that's a large sum of money to have to try to come up with in a short amount of time, but.
Right. I'm, I'm just thinking of that.
I think we have a year or two to figure it out.
Yeah.
As we go forward.
Yeah, I'm just thinking the occupational cancer risk.
Yes.
And how do you choose who gets the, the cancer-free stuff?
Correct. Right, exactly. No, and we, we can certainly work with that as we go forward.
Thank you.
Figure that out. Any questions on that particular account? Okay. The rest of them are all pretty much just standard expenses for, for the, for the department, printing, postage, electricity, natural gas, water, sewer, vehicle fuel.
Chief.
Yes.
One of your notes was on the natural gas for the three stations you would question, is ten thousand nine hundred enough? Is, is that all that stuff, those stations use, Paul?
That's the average over the last three years, yeah. So.
I just wanted to make sure, then I put that note for Paul to take a look, to make sure that he, we had the right number in there. We haven't touched it in a couple of years, and I know gas usually doesn't go down in price. It's one of those fluctuating things depending on the season, so.
But that's what the finance came up with the numbers and did the three-year average of it. It came down, we did a, a little bit of a extra value too. And now that we got new heaters up in Station Three, hopefully it will come down a little bit. Because we were using some, not older technology, but they were getting long in the tooth. They all died at the same time, which is surprising.
Yeah.
But they were all put in at the same time too, but they all died on the same day. So that was fun.
I just saw the note, so I was curious myself.
Yeah, no, thank you. Yep. The only other note as we go down is maintenance of buildings and grounds. You know, we have ten thousand in there. Things, you know, just cost more to maintain what we're doing. And I know we're still working on facilities and what we want to do going forward with that. But at some point, we have to make a decision, either we're going to start to fix what we have and improve what we have, or are we going to go to a new facility? And obviously, you know, those are discussions that, you know, are going to be very difficult to have and very frank discussions and, you know, but they have to happen. It's been a long time, and I think it's time to, you know, figure it out. And, you know, hopefully we can come to what we need to do to keep the guys safe and in a decent environment to work in. And again, I will always use the term live-in, because we, we really do live at the fire station. We're not a nine-to-five operation, they're there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so they live there. So if we can do something to improve that, that's what I'd like to try to do. And then maintenance machinery, service and repair for the different pieces of equipment that we own. Again, just cost to maintain what we currently have. So costs will again, go up depending upon the level of certification and need that we have to repair whatever equipment that we have. Some of that stuff's pretty technical and has to go back to specific vendors for repairs. The moving of the power DMS software fee, that was done last year, but just in case you forgot how that all worked, we left that note in there. And then the last, the last couple of pages we have here, maintenance other, no changes for that. Education and training, this is where the dollars and cents would be for that outside training program. Again, it's kind of buried in a lot of the different line items that we have here, so we don't have a specific line item for it, because it covers a whole different section of different trainings that we go over. So the advanced EMT part, the ACLS PALS recertification, national registry certification, all of those things are part of the training program that we provide our firefighters. The one item that we did not have any control over is the annual EMS certifications and training. Those were increased fees from the national registry, so they went up, so we had to increase that line item to offset the cost of the increase. Other than that, everything else pretty much stayed level funded. We actually, I believe we dropped a little bit on emergency management from last year. Oh, the in-house paramedic program? Sure. So one of the benefits or bonuses to our organization is if a firefighter in our organization has the desire and wish to become a paramedic, the town sets aside a sum of money, right now, it needs to be about fourteen thousand plus, in order for us to send one of our candidates to paramedic training. So a lot of other communities are trying to do the same type of thing. Some have programs and some are better than what we do, and some don't have anything. So we're very lucky to have what we have. The paramedic program, we have two students in it right now. We believe we have maybe one or two more people that are interested in taking that program. While the program maybe takes you eighteen months or so to get through, by the time you finish the program, you get your certification, it's about a two-year commitment. And then after that, while you have the certificate in your hands, you're still a brand-new paramedic. So you still need time in the field to really get the experience and confidence on what it takes to really do a good job and be a good patient care provider as a paramedic. It's not something that just comes from classroom and working in the hospital to get your field time done. You really have to take patience, you know, on yourself and work through it. So it's, it's, it's about a three-year timeframe before we see a benefit of someone going through the paramedic program. But it's a great program, it is a costly program, but it's certainly a needed program. We don't have a lot of paramedics on our organization at the current moment, we've lost a few, and we're trying to recoup those numbers.
How many do you have?
We have four. When I first started, we had around eight.
How many positions are designated for paramedics?
We, we would take as many as we can get, but obviously, that comes with a cost. But, you know, I think my ultimate goal, even when I first got here, would be to try to have at least three to four paramedics per shift, so that we always have paramedic coverage, and then there's always another paramedic on duty. Sometimes what happens is some of these patient cases get pretty technical and confusing, and it's nice to have another paramedic there to help you. Especially when you're trying to read an EKG strip that we're taking in the back of an ambulance, not in a, you know, seventy-two degree hospital room where everything's, you know, Hollywood, right? We're, we're doing this either in someone's house or in the back of the ambulance, so.
So presently, you have four?
We have four.
You have two in training?
We have two in training. We actually have three, but one of them's not in our paramedic training program. He's doing it on his own, and then I have another one that is attending a college program and getting an associate's in paramedicine technology. So we only, the town's only paying for two people, but we have a total of four people in our organization looking for paramedic certification.
And actually, you have one other, additional, you have four on the line and one in the officers?
Yes.
So you have five paramedics on staff.
Right.
So are they doing it on their own because it's quicker, or why would they not want to?
So the paramedic program, when you commit to the program, you actually are committing to the town for five years.
Right.
So if you leave our organization within five years, there's a percentage payback that you have to pay back the monies that you, and it's prorated based on how long you stay. So if you, a lot of, a couple of the people didn't want that commitment, they wanted to take the program on their own. And if they decided to move on to different things, they didn't owe anybody anything. So, but it's an option for some of the candidates. I'm sorry?
It's a fair trade.
Yep, absolutely.
Right, if the taxpayers are going to fund that?
Correct.
Should expect some type of return on that.
Yes.
How long have we been doing this training program?
Oh, way before I got here.
Close to ten years.
Yeah.
I would say that.
Close to ten years. It started with, yeah.
Good deal.
How many, how many people are covered for the fourteen thousand?
Two.
Two a year?
Well, no, we usually budget one, so there's only, we only put in for one person per year. We were able to do two, because one, one particular year, a candidate started the program, it didn't work out correctly. There was some problems with the program that we chose, and we were able to get our money refunded, so we put that money back in the bank. So when we had two candidates that wanted to do it, we worked with the town manager and he said, yeah, we can push those two through, since we have the money.
So it's fourteen for one, that's what the hospital charges.
For the two-year program or fourteen thousand a year?
So the two-year program is a college-level program. I don't know what that costs at the end of the day, because at the end, you're going to get an associate's degree, so I don't know what that cost is.
Okay. So it's fourteen thousand for one person for one year?
Yeah.
Yeah. The, once, it's fourteen thousand, if it takes twelve, fourteen months, it's a person through the program. So they get their little certificate at the end.
It's classroom and clinical.
Classroom and clinical. And practi-, well, clinical, but also on the ambulance too.
Practicum, yeah. So because it wasn't budgeted, do we have people who haven't been able to do it and wanted to, or?
No, we, again, we haven't seen too many people wanting to do this program. Again, like I said, it's a huge commitment, and a lot of the time that they have to spend is on their own. So the town does not reimburse them for any time while they're doing some extra training programs or attending the hospitals for their clinical time or doing the ambulance ride time. The town does not pick up any of those costs whatsoever, so these guys are doing it on their own. So that's some time that they're investing. I'm sorry, sir? Okay. About nine hundred hours per program that they have to put in on their own, besides the classroom that the, the town's paying for. So it's a huge, it's a huge commitment, it's a lot of time.
So theoretically, once all the training is done, you'd probably have eight, so you'll have two per shift?
The goal is to hopefully have two per shift, yes.
Okay.
And then I'd like to get to three, maybe four.
Yeah.
But again, paramedics out in the workforce.
It's everywhere.
Oh, across the country, so we're not unique. It's not just Merrimack that's having the issue, it's, it's a worldwide thing.
It's like the police department, it's also very competitive.
Yeah, well, and the nursing, remember back in the day, we didn't know what we were going to do with nursing, you know, what are we going to do for nursing in hospitals? And there was a huge push to, you know, bring up more nursing students, so maybe we'll see the same thing in the EMS world, I don't know, but it's a huge shortage. I don't know, but it's a huge shortage.
Chief, just a couple of things. Are you fully staffed now or are all our positions filled for the fire department?
We have one open position.
One opening, okay.
Yes.
I see in your overtime supervisory, you initially put in?
We were going to talk about overtime at the end.
Altogether. Yeah, you weren't here.
I'm sorry.
We defaulted that till the end.
Okay. Thank you, I missed that part.
Yeah, I haven't gone over overtime yet.
All right, thanks. And the other thing I just noticed, not, it's kind of a small item, but I see maintenance office equipment on one line and then I go down a little farther into your budget and it says 8334 is maintenance office equipment. Then you go a little farther down and it's, where is it here? Office equipment and it looks like it almost covers the same things. Yeah, 8504.
Yeah, so 8504 would be the specific purchase of equipment. So that would be the hard goods, so purchasing PCs and that type of stuff. So that's what that, that's what that line is. 8334, the maintenance of office equipment, that covers our copiers, fax, computers and other office equipment and other outside technical support on some of our computer systems. So that's what that line item pays for. And then I don't know where you saw the other one, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm just looking at, because I see the maintenance of office equipment, so.
Yep.
And just that top line, it looked like it almost was redundant, but you're saying, okay, so down below, it's just that's for the actual pers, purchase of computer and office upgrades and replacements?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the other ones are service agreements that we have to have for the copiers and all the other machines that we run. The, that next line item further down buys the equipment, so they need to be two separate.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're ready to move on to overtime or do you have anything further, Chief, that you want to put forward?
No, I don't have anything else to add for the basic operating budget, no.
Question for Paul, capital reserve funds. You probably know the CIP off the top of your head. Are we in line with the CIP fund?
We actually.
We're putting in to what we need to get?
We had to increase it because when we did the $400,000, you know, that we were going to put in every year, the price of equipment has gone up. The pumper truck that we ordered last year, that's what, another year out roughly?
No, that might come the end of this fiscal, the end of this calendar year.
It's the end of this calendar year, okay. So, but that was, what, 890?
Eight hundred and somewhat thousand dollars, yes.
And we were?
How much was it?
Eight hundred and somewhat thousand, I don't remember the exact number.
I think it was around 875 to 890.
Yeah.
For it, when it's fully equipped. So, you know, we had to increase the capital reserves because the price of equipment went on. And the other thing was an ambulance, we were doing about $250,000 for an ambulance and that's almost roughly 375 to 400,000 now for the outfit and ambulance.
And when is that next CIP?
We have two on order, to believe it or not, and we've had them on order for a while and.
So, yeah, so the first ambulance is due hopefully sometime March, April. We ordered that one in '22. The next ambulance should come shortly one year later because we ordered the next one in '23. So we should get one the next year about the same time. And I can tell you, the costs for those are going to go up. While the manufacturer held the cost for the box for the first truck, he had no control over the Ford chassis. So the Ford chassis, and I don't have a number yet, to be honest with you. I've been working with the ambulance vendor to get that number so that I can pass that on to the town manager so we can figure out. We were lucky that we used some of the capital reserve funds to purchase the cardiac compression devices ahead of time and I put them in to the cost of the truck, so there was some savings there that we could use. We also, because of the grant that we got to purchase radio equipment, I won't, I can take the radios out, but again, all of those monies I'm going to save are actually going to pay for the truck. And then the last one will be, you know, the chassis cost, I just don't know what it's going to be.
All depends on what Ford decides to charge for.
Right.
550.
Yeah, 2025 for the 550, where we really wanted a 2022, but we're going to end up with a 2025.
So what, what has happened in the world of, of emergency management machinery and equipment is that you have to start thinking, if it's on your schedule for 2029, you actually have to order it in 2026.
Right.
So that you can get in '29. Remember how long it took us to get the ladder truck?
Speaking of ladder trucks, is that finally all ready?
It's, it's, it's in, it's working.
All the training is done and all that?
It's in full operation, the training is done, yeah, absolutely. So it's, it's actually gone on a few calls. In fact, I think the day we signed off on some people was the first day it actually went on the call to a chimney fire that we had that extended into an attic space, so the guys were able to use the truck. So, yeah, that's all set to go.
But to answer your question, we have increased, the increases are to cover the increased costs going forward that we know of right now. And we're hoping that things quiet down a little bit, but I don't know.
Don't plan on it.
I don't, I don't know, you know, I really don't know because.
I know.
You know, we got $65,000 in there for, for a one-ton and that's, you know, it used to be 40, 30. And they just keep going up and every time they EPA or somebody wants to do some more emissions, the engines are $10,000 more, especially on the bigger trucks, the diesels, the Cumming diesels. If you don't get, if you get lucky and get one that's, before they change the emissions on it, it's $10,000, $15,000 more they're charging you for the truck. So that's one of the drivers there. Steel's going up, price of steel's going way up for them, so.
And municipal discounts are starting to fade away.
Right, because they can get it. They can get them now. There is a three-year wait. A three-year wait, I don't know if you read the article, there's a local town that is doing a 10-year lease on a ladder truck. It's like over $2 million. Or, yeah, over $2 million 10-year lease for that. We paid 1.5 and if we would've got the ladder, if we would've bought the ladder truck that day that it rolled in, it was about 2.1, 2.2.
Well, the difficulty is, if it takes you three years to get it, it means there's not enough manufacturers to come up with some competition, so you're at their mercy.
But it's all of them now.
Right, but it's insane that ours was 1.6.
1.5, 1.7.
1.5 and, and it's now 2-plus?
Over 2, 2.2, 2.3 and they keep on going up.
Three years later?
Yeah, and there's certainly plenty of manufacturers in the marketplace, but they're all in the same boat. It's almost like they all work collectively together, so all the pricing is pretty much similar, no matter who you pick. So they can't find workers to do the work. The materials are what the materials are and, but the biggest thing that we heard is trying to get workers to build the equipment. They just don't really exist anymore, so.
Chief, what's, what's the Eric's life on an engine, a fire, when you're?
It depends upon the use that it's going to get. Here in Merrimack, you know, I don't really want to run an engine more than 10 years frontline and then put it as a backup or reserve piece for another 10 and then you would move on from it. Another smaller community that's not as busy as us may get 25 years out of a truck, but I've also seen in my career, the quality of materials is not the same as it was 25 years ago. We're using cheaper materials, we're using thinner metals, we're doing different composites, we're, you know, doing a whole different, host of different things. And then even just the electronics in vehicles now that we didn't have when I first started, everything was manual. Now with everything being electronic, what they tell you to replace your home PC every four years? You know, so, yeah, there's a fine line for us to figure out, you know, how long can we run a piece of equipment and make it last? You know, while we would like to see it last 25, I'm not sure it's going to get 25. You know, I think we'll be lucky to get 20. And that's a sad thing to say that, you know, the 2.2 million dollars for an aerial truck that you hope to get 25, I hope we get 20 and I'm not sure we're going to get it just because of the way things are built today and the quality of materials. It's not the same.
And the other thing is the, the equipment, too, has changed over the years. So we've had, we have a truck that we can't use, that's Engine Five, oh, Engine Six, the International, right?
Yeah.
We can't use it because the guys can't fit in it with their equipment. So, you know, the cab was built and back in the day, it was top of the line. Still a great truck, it runs, starts, runs, but we can't use it because the guys can't fit in it because of the equipment. The equipment they have to go protective of gear and everything else changes, so.
All right.
Anything else before we move?
You ready?
To overtime, yeah.
Chief?
Okay, so overtime. And the officers, the supervisor overtime in account number 8105 and the firefighter is one in 8111, they're broken down pretty much the same way, so I think we can talk generically about each one. I don't think I need to be specific unless you want to be and then we can certainly do a deep dive into whatever you'd like to. But there's a couple of line items that we just, you know, have to budget for, there's no way around those things. So emergency callback, those, those numbers equate to when guys have to get called back to work. Contractually, if Station One drops below two people, I have to recall for staff. So we have to have a number for that. Guys get calls, you know, late in their shift, so if they get a call at quarter of eight and they're supposed to be off-shift at eight, well, they got to stay on the clock until they're finished the call. So you have to have overtime hours to cover those things. So the emergency callback number, there's really not a lot of wiggle room with that particular line. The holidays, guys work holidays, I got to pay them. I don't have a choice. Contractually, we're obligated to pay those folks. So that's another line that we really don't have any control over. The projects line is those extra things that we might want to have our staff do or assist with. So sometimes we have to go pick up apparatus at a dealership or we need a specific project done or other types of things that need to happen that's only budgeted for 150 hours. So there's not a lot of room there either. Live fire training, we had that two years ago, eight hours, so I put it back in. Last year, we asked for another eight, so we'd get to 16, but obviously, the budget got defaulted, so it went to zero because I had to make a decision, do I want to do training or do I want people to answer the call when the phone rings? So we chose to have staff respond to calls. So that line item of live fire training is back in. So again, you can take it out, but understanding that, at least with Councilor Hunter and I'm sure the rest of you somewhat agree as well, training is a key, important piece of what we do. And I spoke earlier that we have such a young staff that the more training we can do for our folks, the better they're going to be at their job. And the opportunity to do live fire training, which the department hasn't had in many, many, many years, is huge. I'm grateful that we don't get a lot of building fires. But when you don't get a lot of building fires, that's a skill set that you get rusty at and you can make mistakes. So we have to supplement that in some way, shape or form. So we're trying to do live fire trainings to create that environment, but, you know, when it's training, it's a little bit different when it's the real thing. But at least if we can get people comfortable with moving hose, wearing SCBA's, working environments where they can't see, you know, providing some frustrations that they will actually face in the real world, that's what we like to try to provide with that live fire training. So that line item's back. So in my opinion, really, the only thing that we have some wiggle room to do is the station shift coverage line item, which back when the SAFER grant was coming forward and you all had to make a decision on what the staffing model would be, there was a lot of discussions. I went back and reviewed that video and I believe it was Councilor Hunter that came up with kind of a middle ground to say, "Well, why don't we do 11 and we'll try to do person for person if they're out for vacation, sick and personal time." But that was as long as the budget lasted. That was the caveat to that. So we've tried our best to manage that. However, we're having a frustration at figuring out how to manage that time. So when we put the budget together, the town manager plugged in a number and then I just took an average of what we are currently doing today. Because again, I believe that we need to think differently on how we calculate our overtime, especially for this line item. And there's one specific one that I think that we've never had to think about before until just within the last year or two. And that is, we have to start budgeting for open positions. Back in the day, you'd have 500 guys or 500 people vying for one firefighter spot. We have 500 firefighter spots and three people. So again, not unique to Merrimack, it's across the country. We're not in any different boat than anybody else is, but it's something that we need to think about, you know, having a number that is what works to plan for open positions in our organization. Now, while we can take those dollars from that line item for the Sally, for the firefighter, well, I have to pay time and a half. So I can't use, I'm still going to run short even filling in an overtime spot. So we have to start to think about what's a good number to plug in there. The town manager and my assistant chief and I spent probably an hour and a half, two hours just going over that particular line today to come up with some numbers that we thought might work, might not work. Are we seeing any trends? Are we finding anything that is glaring, that's sticking out at us? And I think at the end, we were still kind of frustrated as to how, it's just, I don't know what number to plug in there. So while we have a number in there of 8,750 hours, I did my own little calculation on the side and if you have the electronic version, you can see my note that I plugged in there. So I'll just stick to the firefighter one because that's obviously the biggest number that we're looking at right now. But from July through November, I took an average amount of hours that have been used so far this year. So the vacation average hours per month was 261. The average sick time hours per month was 405. The personal time average per month was 336 and then the opens averaged about 216. Now that's a number that is going to fluctuate only because, you know, if I don't have any opens, then we're doing really well. I think at that particular moment in time, we had like two, maybe three opens at that time, so that number might be a little high. But I'll budget and calculate high and then we can always figure out where can we live, right? So my total, and then I, obviously those per month, and then I multiplied all those by 12 to come up with a total. So my total year hours that I think we should be budgeting for is somewhere around 14,616. The town manager and I spoke earlier today, again, that open position average hours, we talked about that and if we took that out, the number dropped to somewhere around 10,000? Is that the number, we come up somewhere around 10,000? So 10,000 compared to 8750, we're not that far off on hours. So I don't know what would be best going forward, but those are some of the numbers that we talked about.
Can, Chief? Go ahead. Have we, I was looking for probably two years ago now, I'd spoken about the graph that a previous chief had used. It was a round graph and it clocked all the calls, all the different things throughout a 24-hour period. And he was able to put that together and we could extrapolate numbers from that. And that's something I've been looking for to see what kind of, what kind of calls are coming in at varying times during the day.
Okay.
And so I didn't know.
I don't have that, no. I do have.
Oh, go ahead.
I do have a breakdown because the town manager did give me a sense that you were looking for numbers from calls that actually were between 11P and 7A. So I do have that data.
I mean, that would be helpful because that's, that's where I, I'm imagining for the most part, it doesn't hold true all the time, of course, but that would be the lesser situation.
And I also have it on video so I can put it up to the public.
Okay. Andy, did you want your question now?
I got the wrong one.
So close.
I'll wait till we're, we're done with this, but I do have some questions after.
Yeah, okay. I do know if you want.
After this line.
Okay, so. I did calendar year 2024. I'm still trying to learn our new software product. But I was able to extrapolate some decent data out of it to at least give you a picture of what we do. So in calendar year 2024, we did 3,034 calls. Out of those calls, 648 of them were between the hours of 11P and 7A. So on average, about 21% of our call volume happens between 11P and 7A. Now, if we break it down into something that most people would understand, let's say a three hour, a three shift breakdown, you know, eight to, eight to four, four to 12, 12 to eight, right? That's like 33% for each one of those sections, if we break it down in eight hour increments. So 21% compared to 33%, we're not that far off. Again, most, again, we're talking about a time period and everybody's usually sleeping, not a lot's going on, but our call volume is still pretty significant when you look at those numbers. The other thing too is it's something you can't put on a slide. You can't quantify it, but a lot of the fires that happen in our industry happen between those hours of the day, between 11P and 7A. And that's where most people are sleeping, and that's the highest risk for a loss of life. You've probably seen stories on the news, you know, up here in New Hampshire, for some reason, we've had quite a few fatal fires because of non-working smoke detectors and other issues. So the systems that are out there, people aren't taking advantage of to help them. So any reduction in staff could lead to, you know, us not being able to provide the service that we want to provide the residents of this community. So. Does that answer your question a little bit?
To a degree, it's, it's not the detail necessarily that I was looking for, but it gives me a reasonable idea.
Yep.
And I, I get the call at night, but we're talking about staffing to 11 and the need for it all the time. And so if there is in fact a fire call, I would imagine that the staffing to 10 would get us started and then the call and back in. It's not my business, you know, that, you know, to know that great detail, but I'm just, I'm thinking that our overtime budget is enormous and and trying to get my arms around that is, is the difficulty. And so if there's a segment of time, play the odds, I get it. It's not gonna be a perfect situation. But in order to try and come to some resolution for this situation we find ourselves in, that's, that's what I'm looking for.
Right.
Personally.
I understand. But I would not be a good public safety official if I recommended to cut any staffing at night or anytime.
I'm saying.
I don't wanna be the guy that.
Been doing.
I'm sorry?
I'm saying not filling in over to 11 if we, you know, for, if we're short, it's gonna be that overnight thing.
Right. And I think if you go back to that original meeting when you got the SAFER grant, right, the number that was really being tossed around was 12. Not 11, not 10, 12. 12 was the number that according to NFPA standards, you needed 12 firefighters on a particular fire ground to handle a basic residential fire. Not a department building, not a commercial building, but your basic residential fire. 12 was the number.
But what does that FPA require, recommend we have regularly though?
Probably more than that.
Right.
Right.
The point, but it's.
I, and I understand. So that's where you as the politicians get to make those calls, right? I'm only the guy that can give you the information.
Appreciate it.
And I understand that. It's a very difficult decision that you guys get to make. I don't get to make that call. I can provide you the information. I'm hired as your public safety expert to give you the guidance and information, and then you guys have to make the best informed decision that you want to make. I don't think I would ever recommend anybody to not have, if they can do it, have the most people on duty at any given time to manage whatever call happens to come in. Now again, when we say we have 10 or 11 people on duty and we get a fire call, that they're all there. They may not all be there. We, when I was going through some of the data, there's a few times where there were a couple of times with two or three calls going on at the same time, within a couple hours of each other. So while we wanna say, hey, I have 11 people or 12 people or 10 people. If we're, if we're out on calls, I don't have that number anymore. That number drops. So if an ambulance is busy, well now, let's say we're at 10. If I have two people on an ambulance call, I'm now at eight.
Right. But see, and that's the difficulty with this graph. What we had in the past, again, it goes back a couple of chiefs ago, was a graph that showed us the calls that were out when it was double or triple.
Okay.
Things. And see, and I can't, I can't see that here. But I understand what you're saying.
Right.
But.
And we've, we've looked for that. We've really, we really have looked for that information somehow between chiefs that disappeared. So it's kinda hard to recreate what was being done at that time.
If someone has an old drawing or an old.
We have an old drawing.
That I can look at, I could probably recreate it, but I, I don't know what, yeah, like the town manager said, I don't have any records to look at.
Yeah. Okay. Andy, sorry.
Before I ask my question, I, I just wanna address the 12 firefighters, 11 firefighters, right? We gotta make decisions. Those decisions impact taxpayers. I don't know if anybody watched the school budget meeting the other night. There was a lady got up and talked about not being able to make her house payment anymore. Those are the kind of decisions we wrestle with every day. I wish I could give you 15 firefighters.
Absolutely.
But I know that I'm putting somebody else out if I make that decision. So it's a balance that we have to deal with all the time here. It's not, it's not an easy decision. Looking at your comment that you put in, Chief. You said vacation average is 261 hours a month?
Yes.
Sick time averages 405 hours a month? Are we saying we're burning more sick time than we are vacation every month?
That was something we looked at today and we didn't find any glaring trends to see, was anybody abusing sick time?
However, during that sick time though, Chief, which we looked at too, was the workers comp was included in sick time.
Okay.
So we had. I would be curious what that average is. And the reason I say that, you know, my day job, I manage a staff a little over 400 people, and I would expect sick time to be somewhere around a third of vacation time. I'm, I'm really surprised to see that at almost 200% of vacation time. It kind of, I don't understand it. It literally makes no sense in the civilian world.
Well, our, so our guys in staff, if they take a, if they take a sick time, it's not an eight hour period, it's 24 hours. So where you work, that's an eight hour day. Where our staff works, it's a 24 hour day. So that'll be three times what your numbers would be. So it is a little bit hard to equate.
But not really, because we're, firefighters are not in five days in a row either, right?
Nope, they're not.
Yeah, it's a 24 hour shift, but at the same time, we're not, we're not really comparing apples to apples, right?
It, it, yeah, I'm not sure how to equate it, um, cause our guys work 42 hours a week. Your staff probably works 40 hours a week on the average, right? So when you average hours, 42, 40, that's about the same. So if our staff takes one sick day, that's 24 hours of time. If one of your staff takes a sick day, that's an eight hour time in a 40 hour period. So, yeah, I don't know how we come to a resolution as to what we would agree on, but I don't, again, we did look at the numbers to see if there was a pattern or if there was a sick time abuse, and we don't see that.
And then can you explain personal time? You have an average of 336 a month. What is personal time?
So personal time is time that's contractually obligated by the town. It's in their contract. Personal time is for them to use whenever they see fit and for whatever reason they want to take that time off. They get 72 hours per person, per year.
72 hours and that's on top of vacation time?
Correct.
And then we have to pay overtime for another firefighter to come in and cover that 72 hour shift?
Correct.
Okay. I, I guess what we didn't have this problem in 2019, right? We, we had, and I go back to that bar chart. Paul, that you show us every time we do a quarterly review of the financials, you throw up a bar chart that has all the overtime budgets and, and actuals for all the departments. And if I go back to that in my head, it seems to me that we had a spike almost all the way across all town departments in 2020 due to COVID. And it seems like all the other departments, and I could be wrong, I'd be curious to see this, maybe a seven year average of that chart annualized. But it seems to me like the other departments have, have recovered for that and they're back to their pre-COVID overtime budget. With the exception of the fire department, is still at COVID levels of overtime. And I don't understand how we, why we can't get back to 2019 or something similar given rate of inflation and all that other.
Well, well, given the compromise that was selected at the meeting when you were accepting the SAFER grant, the compromise was.
What year was that?
I assumed 2020 or 2021. It was just before I got here. So I got here in November of 21, so it was before then.
February of 22, it kicked in. So it was probably fall of 21. It's probably right around probably November-ish of 21, because you came 21, right?
Yep.
I think it would be good to see that chart if we could, when we do budget deliberations, to see what that seven year average of all the departments are and what it looks like. And that very well may be a driving factor.
It is. And if, if I could finish, if you don't mind.
Please.
The, the selection that you chose for compromise was 11 you wanted to staff to. 12 was not really doable. It could have been, but it might've been a struggle to get to 12. So the thought was, well, let's do 11. And then if we need to, maybe we need to think about going to 12, cause we need to, but we need to try something to see where we want to go forward. But you wanted to staff to 11 as consistently as possible. So that meant if somebody was out, we would put somebody in their spot at overtime. Which again, that's, that's a big chunk number to put in. And if that's a decision that you wanted to make, then that's what you chose and that's what the department has tried to do. So by doing that, that skews the overtime. While the police department might go down a person or a car, that's what they're doing for their department. You guys opted for us to try to do it for as long as possible, maintain that shift staff of 11. So that means overtime. Every time there's someone out, we, we put a person in the spot. So that's gonna, again, to what you're trying to describe for a picture in that bar graph, that's gonna skew that, cause it's not accurate, right?
And see, that's the tough thing about this job is you make a decision like that, and then all of a sudden the numbers are before you.
That's right.
Right?
That's exactly right. So this is where we need to decide, what do we want to do going forward? Whereas in history, from what I understand, I wasn't here, so I can't speak to it eloquently, but I'll do my best from what I know. While the, the shift strengths were around nine or 10 people, sometimes these guys were shift staffing to maybe six or seven. So they wouldn't backfill that person that was gone for whatever reason, sick, vacation, or whatever it was. We made a conscious decision based on that meeting vote to try to keep 11 every time.
Boy, some guy that proposed that idea, right?
Let's have.
Some guy that proposed that idea.
Look, it was a great compromise to figure something out and what does, and I think the question was, and I think Councilor Harrington was mentioning it, well, we'll need to see what it does and let's look at that picture. And then decide what do we want to do next. And maybe 12 might be a better number. We just didn't know at that, or you guys just didn't know at that time. So you, you picked a direction and here we are, now we need to figure out what's the next direction.
That's a, that's an interesting option. You know, you mentioned in 2019, we, we used to staff to, I think it was 10, and then if some folks were out, we would drop back down. Is a better option to staff to 12 and if they're out, we just don't backfill? I mean, is, is, I, I don't know what the, the trade off on that budget wise, staffing to 12 and not paying time and a half overtime?
We talked about that, Chief and I as well.
We did.
And the overtime isn't gonna come down.
It, it would in some respects, but get some of those.
You're not, you're not gonna get man for man. You're not gonna get, if, if, for instance, if we hire four new firefighters at say $100,000 with benefits, which is low, that's $400,000. Your overtime is not coming down $400,000. Your overtime's probably staying at five, $600,000 because you're still staffing to 11.
Well, but that's the point. You wouldn't be staffing to 11.
But you would, if you're at 12, you're gonna staff to 11 on overtime.
If, if, if you go back to the pre
Right.
policy, you're at 12, and if somebody's out, then your, your staffing is your staffing. Chief said they used to drop down to, you know, whatever they had, eight, if that's what they had.
No, it was only dropped two. The rule was dropped two.
If, if that, if you're at 10, then you dropped eight.
If that's the conscious decision, I guess of the council, we'd have to work on getting those numbers.
Yeah. I don't think that's a decision, but I think it's worth looking at the numbers and seeing what that does to the budget. I don't think you can make a decision without having the data in front of you.
The other thing is too, again, having been during that time. One of the pivotal pieces of information that we received that made us all feel comfortable with the four extra positions was the mutual aid information.
Yep.
Because at that time, we were receiving significantly more mutual aid than we were giving.
Sure.
And we had a philosophy at that time, other towns should not be staffing us. We should be staffing our own. And that's why we felt justified. You remember that discussion? So I think that information for any future consideration, that would be pivotal information to have. One other questions I have is you are going down till 10 now, is that correct? Are we sending out mutual aid during that time?
Yes.
Why? If we are, if we in fact, and I'm not saying, part of me is going, of course we would help.
Right.
But at the same time, if we're saying that's skeleton for us.
Sure.
How can we make a decision of sending out aid to other towns when we are at a skeleton status?
Right.
Now, I also understand the impetus, if they need us, we want to be able to help. But that's the dilemma I'm having trouble with.
Correct. So while, again, it's how can eloquently put this?
It's difficult.
Well, no, I'm just trying to be polite. And I apologize, but
I have thick skin, you don't have to be polite.
While mutual aid is an important piece of every community, not just Merrimack.
Right.
Sure.
I don't think I want to be that community that says, well, I don't have enough people, I can't send anybody to help you. Cause what happens when I need the help? Do you want that same philosophy on the other side?
Understood.
I know me as an incident commander and my guys, the girls that are working at a particular event or incident. I don't want to have to say, all right, well, call town B, or call town C. No, I, I, that's just not something that I don't think any fire chief would want to have to wrestle with. So we don't, in our world, we don't play those games, I guess would be a right way to put it, right?
And I, and I understand that and I wouldn't want you to.
And I did put mutual aid numbers together if you want to see those.
Great.
And that does, while you're handing that out, if, on the overtime to call back for that, is that under the emergency callback or would that be shift, station shift coverage?
Could you ask your question again? I'm sorry.
When you, when we send out a crew for mutual aid, we backfill it?
No.
We don't?
No.
So we could be down three or four people at that point?
Yes.
See, that's the dilemma I'm having.
Right.
I mean, and I totally agree with you. The last thing I would want is to not give mutual aid. Let me make that perfectly clear. It also however creates a dilemma with we're putting our own town in a critical. I mean, if, if we're saying 10 is skeleton and we're sending mutual aid and three or four go, then that leaves the town in a critical. Do you understand my point?
I do.
And I'm not implying that you would not send mutual aid. That's not what I'm saying.
And I'm not sure you, you understand the other communities. We're all in the same boat. We all are running skeleton crews. The only communities that are not would be Nash or Manchester. Right? Bedford, they have 10 or 11 people. Amherst, totally pretty much call department, other than a few people that work full time during the daytime. Litchfield, call department. Londonderry, they have the same roughly staffing that we do. So everybody's running super thin, can really only handle one, maybe two calls. Anything more than that, all bets are off and everybody's struggling to try to make the event work.
You know, another thing that I remember, and people have been here for a while will remember, you, young guys will. When we had the newspaper, we would get, the police and the fire would publish the logs, what they, the calls. Which was great because it really gave the public an idea of how busy everybody was. And, and, and it would be nice if we could consider doing that, even if it's a matter of putting on the website, on your website.
Absolutely.
So that the public could access that.
No, we.
I mean, I think that would be very educational for the public to know exactly what kind of calls. Now, clearly, you'd have to be careful with private information. If you're going to a certain address for a fire, or you're going for a false alarm, which I know, I'm sure there's plenty. But those kinds of things would not only educate us, but it would also educate the public.
Absolutely.
So I would seriously for the fire, I'm sorry, the police as well as the fire.
Yeah. We've been working closely with local 2904 to do just that. It is important for the public to understand what it is that we do. Historically, we have not done a very good job at educating the public in exactly what it is that we do and giving them all of the information that we can. Sometimes we're, we've hit, we missed the mark when we're putting out information and collectively, we've all decided we need to do better. Because it's the right thing to do. So we certainly don't mind putting numbers up. I know we do send a report to the town manager monthly. And it's just generic. It says how many fire calls we did, how many medical calls did we did, how many MVAs did we do, and then service calls. If we want to be more detailed, we certainly can, cause there are certain call for service reasons that we can use and it doesn't give up anybody's address. It just says how many, this particular call type did you go to? So we can create as many call types as you want, or as little call types as you want. We can do anything that you wish.
Well, as I remember.
And put the information.
And correct me if I'm wrong.
For more of the blog that we used to go out there that.
Yeah, it used to be during the week, Monday, this is what happened. Tuesday, this is what happened.
Yep.
And I used to read it all the time.
Six foot Boozick Lake Road 20 times, whatever.
But I mean, it was just literally a weekly, on a day report that the public was, oh, they were busy last night.
Right. And we certainly could do that and keep it generic. Like I said, we could keep, how many EMS calls did you do? How many false alarms did you go to? How many false alarms did you go to? We could certainly put that information together and make it accurate.
This information, is this, now, last I was on the council, you guys were running a separate software package from communications. You guys sort of think we're running Firehouse?
Yeah, so we run, yeah. So back in the day, yeah, the police had their program and we had ours.
So are you guys together now?
So everything's, almost everything's together. There's still a few pieces that we're still trying to still work out. But as far as when calls come into the town of Merrimack, somewhere in the communication center, it's put into the central CAD system, the computer dispatch program system. The CAD system has two sides to it, a police response and a fire response. So based on what the call is, they'll put the call for service reason in, and then it will generate whatever apparatus or equipment needs to go to that particular call. So we have all of that data. Some of the reports that are quote canned that come with the program are not as detailed as we would like, and those are things that we have to work on to figure out how we can do better with some of those programs. But a lot of this data and information, I had to go with spreadsheets of data and then have to like physically count. I can tell you one of the problems that all of the software programs have is, and it's certainly important to me, is how many times were there duplicate calls at the same time? Wow, well, Chief, we can't get you that. I'm like, what do you mean? That's, that's a key piece for me.
Right.
Well, yeah, well, we could put it on Excel spreadsheet and you'd count it out. I'm like, well, yeah, thanks, but it doesn't really help. I understand, thank you. But, so while we, again, and that's when you buy a specific general program, there are things that you have to do as a customer to say, well, these are the things I gave up to have a canned program, so.
I'm just, I'm bringing that up just for the, one, to see if you guys finally got together. At one point, I ran our communication system and there was just a, there was constant trying to keep up with two separate systems for the dispatchers.
No, everything is under one roof. There's still some problem of sharing information across disciplines, so some of the things that are put in under the police side are hidden, and we're not allowed to see that level of information, just because of some of the rules that are under CGIS and some of the other things. But we're trying to figure out some workarounds because the basic things that we want to see, well, no, I don't care about somebody's date of birth, I don't care about somebody's social security number, can I have a name and a phone number so that I can call the business because I have a question or I need them to open the door? We can't get that. You would think we could, but we can't.
Okay.
But we're working on those things.
I got it. I guess I just want to reiterate to Andy's feelings because I think that I look and I want our, I want our first responders to have the equipment they need and the staffing they need, but I also want to manage the tax rate for our taxpayers, you know, of which a lot of your staff and myself, we're all taxpayers here. But, you know, I mean, we're talking, I'm hearing now, you guys want to add, bump up to a 12, four more firefighters, you know? And then I, then I say to myself, okay, but we're also looking at a public safety building, which I believe the fire department badly needs, and the police department. And now we, we identified years ago that there was radio problems, the council supported, we're hopefully going to, we budgeted, that, that money's going in, 1.2 million. And over the years, I mean, we've continuously, the town managers have done well and the town council's supported, making sure that you guys get your fire engines, ambulances when they're due to come in, you know? So I think we're just all, it's not a lack of support, it's trying to just manage where to spend the money and when to spend it. You know, I know when I left the council, we were bringing on four firefighters under grant, and then subsequently, the chief asked for four more, and we approved that at the time. And part of the, the package that was sold to us, I believe, was you're going to see overtime drop. And I frankly haven't seen that. So I get concerned, and I know that's minimum staffing and everything, but I just kind of want to just say that out loud, is that we're trying to support, but we have to try and figure out how to, how to spread it around to the departments that need it, including your department, as well as keeping the tax rate.
No, and I think everybody on my department understands that there's only so much to go around. And at the end of the day, remember, we're the ones going out helping those people that probably don't have a lot to begin with. So we certainly see those types of conditions, and we certainly understand that a lot of people on fixed incomes. So when the town needs to make decisions and spend monies, it affects them. So we certainly understand that this is not an easy decision or any, any way, shape, or form. We're not certainly like a Nashua or Manchester, we don't have those coffers to work with, so.
And I say that not so much, I know you understand it. I say it more for maybe the five or 10 people watching the cable.
Thank you for this information, the mutual aid, it's very informative.
So, and I'll just briefly explain it because you have both sheets, the public has only seen the one sheet. So we sent out for mutual aid 97 times, canceled en route, that means we got canceled before we even got anywhere. So we got to have those, our people back pretty quickly. And then we received mutual aid about 86 times, and then we canceled them 19 times because we were able to take care of the call ourselves. The other data that you'll see is each community that asked for help from us and what we did. So there's, again, Nashua, they're just a big city, so they have certainly a larger, they can run into issues just like we can, just they're a bigger community, so you multiply it. But there's really nobody else that's, we're supporting any other community on their own. It's a pretty even spread of, you know, when people ask for help. And then how many times did we ask for help? There is an asterisk that I need to make sure we all understand, right? So when we were down to one ambulance, just because of breakdowns and things happen, right? So that was about a 12-day period, 13-day period. Nashua came in six times in that timeframe, so in about 10 days, they came six times, and Bedford came nine. So that kind of skews the numbers a little bit, to be truthfully honest and factual with all the data that we do, right? If we take six away from Nashua and Amer, they really only came to us 14 times. So we pretty much have been covering most of the calls that we need to cover at our own community. But if we do go somewhere, at least with the ambulance anyway, we can generate those revenues because we get to bill for those ambulance calls. So there is a benefit to us going mutually for ambulance calls.
Yep.
Now, one, one thing, and if you want this data sheet, I can give it to you as well. So while we all say, hey, we can call for mutual aid, right? Well, how long does it take? Right? How, how long does it take? So I picked a central point in town, figuring it to be a fair spot. Because if we're near the Bedford line, well, Bedford's going to get there a little sooner than Nashua, so I just picked a central location. What would be the average time for a community to come help us in the center of town? Right? So Nashua, it's 13 minutes. So our staff has to work 13 minutes before somebody comes to help them. Amherst is 14, but they're a predominantly call department, so you have to wait till they get to their fire station before they come. So I don't know what that number is, but it's certainly longer than 14 minutes. Bedford is 19 minutes, and Londonderry is 17. And that's pretty much, that grouping of towns that you see is our first round of mutual aid when we call to work in fire, which means we really have an incident, we really need people to come help us. So on the average, about 13, 14 minutes before we're going to see some help. We're on our own. So if we reduce staffing to whatever number that we can figure out is a workable number, those, those folks are working on their own. And if they're busy with other ambulance calls, then we don't have as many people at that event, whatever it may be. This next grouping that you see is the next round of mutually that comes to help us, it's up to 29 minutes for somebody to come and another community. So if, if this previous grouping wasn't able to help us, we would call these next towns to come in and help us. It just takes time to get here. There's no easy way to get to Merrimack, it just, it is what it is. So I just figured you should have that information as well. Because again, we're going to make a decision on how to staff the fire department, so that's kind of where, you need the bigger picture to understand when you pick one direction, well, what does that mean? And if we go in another direction, well, what does that mean? So.
Any further questions on overtime? Jennifer?
Do you have any data for us on call volume? Has there been like an explosion of calls since all of the apartments have gone in, like over the past couple of years?
No, and looking at the data from calendar year '23 to '24, we actually did less calls in '24 than we did in '23. So we haven't really seen any huge increases. And to be quite honest, I'm not sure we would, given that the level of clients that can afford those apartments probably don't need our help as often, whereas some of the more unfortunate folks that have a lot of issues and concerns and health problems and things, they don't live in those types of apartments, so.
Right, I'm thinking they're possibly a younger crew.
Right.
Right.
But that's not to say going forward in the future that those, those sites might generate more calls for us, but typically-
So Chief, what are we around, between 3,000 and what, 3,400 roughly?
For what calls?
Calls.
Yeah, well, you just saw that we did 3,000.
Well, 3,000 this year, but I think, what was the most, 34?
I-
Couple of years ago?
I don't know, to be honest, I'm sorry.
37? All right, 36 last year, so. So you're looking at between 3,000 and say 36, 3,700 calls a year.
All right. Was that Jennifer? All right, is anything else on fire?
So Paul, you're going to get the information that Andy had asked for.
Overtime chart over the last seven years for all departments on the 29th.
And also the projection of the implications if it was 12?
12 versus 11 with overtime, 12 versus...
12 drop 11 all the time?
Well, you want to know the impact of overtime if it were to 12, and you're able to drop down, right?
Yeah, but do we drop to 11 or do we drop to 10?
I could do both.
Maybe we could look at both.
I, I could do both, kinda, realistically, I could try.
I think we, I think we should at least look at both.
Right. 12, 11, 12, 10, okay. Verse OT. The other thing, you know, the chief and I and Deputy Assistant Chief did spend a lot of time looking at the overtime numbers and the hours and came up and we've had this conversation a lot over the three years the chief was here about it, because the numbers are saying one thing, but we're not seeing on the other end, so we're just trying to figure out why, when we're doing all our calculations and it's saying we should be good, we're not. And that's what we're trying to look into. And we're looking at our calculations for sick leave, what they accrue, what they are able to use, vacation, what they use, personal time, what they use the full personal time, and we're calculating how many hours we need. We're just, it's, it's, the numbers are saying one thing when you do your projections, but actual is saying it different. We're trying to figure why there's a difference. Why, why are the actuals saying something different than, than the projections?
That doesn't make sense.
Exactly, and that's why we're banging our heads against the wall. We, we did-
And we're trying to figure it out too, that's-
Right.
That's, we, we looked at it three different ways today. Three different ways we looked at the overtime hours, what it should be projecting it, the 14,000 hours that the chief showed. We backed some out because I didn't have the 216 hours for, for the vacancies. And, and we called, you know, to coin a phrase, it cost me 50 cents on a dollar for those open positions. Because we're saving the dollar up in salaries-
But you're paying.
But we're paying down below. And it's not an exact 50 cents on the dollar, it depends on who's coming in. We didn't have those, so we backed those out. We looked at backing out some of the personal time because there's only an infinite amount of personal time these guys get. There's 36 in that, in this 8111, multiplied that out by 72, we figured they're going to use that, that's that number. We looked at it, we're like, at most, we came up with being within $50,000 of budget, and we're just banging our heads against the wall. Why aren't the projections going to actual? And that's what we're looking at. Why? Why is that? And I always, I told this chief, I told the previous chief, I told the chief before that, on overtime, workers' comp, that's a separate, it comes out of a, you don't have to, that overtime that you're covering will cover as a town.
Because you-
Because it's a workers' comp issue. So we've, we've said that to the chief, because if the guy's out on workers' comp, we'll cover it someplace else. Even backing that out of our projections, the numbers aren't matching. So I just, it's not that we're not working on this or looking at it and we're just throwing a number at the wall and saying, you're stuck with this number. We're trying to figure out why our projections are not hitting the actuals at this time. And, and that's what we worked on today, we'll work on it for the next week.
Are projections substantially different than the actual? Roughly, you don't have to be specific.
Not really. Maybe sick leave a little bit, but vacation and personal time are right on. But sick leave does, they only earn so much, so if they use it, they use it. And we went through and looked at every individual in this unit, what their usage was, and there wasn't a pattern that we could say, he's taking a day off every other week. There, there's more that I have to do, and there's more information that we have to garner, and that's what we said today about looking at it and what's going on with, with it. But it's just, we're working on it. I guess what I'm trying to say is we're working on it together, trying to come up with what, what we're looking at. The numbers I've been using have been tried and true for years, it's just after COVID, they just got blown out of, I don't understand why. And, and, you know?
We even threw in fictitious numbers on top of Paul's averages, and we still couldn't replicate what, what actually is going on versus what we project to go on.
Right.
It just doesn't line up.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
And I, I mean, I, I don't know about everybody else, I appreciate the time. I mean, this is a big budget. I mean, this is between the two lines to over $850,000. It, it's, it's not chump money that we're talking about here. So it, it's worth our time to, to look at the numbers, look at the data, put some analysis, figure out what is the, what is the best value for the taxpayer that is going to staff our fire departments at a safe level? And if that's going to 12, dropping to 11, going to 12, dropping to 10, maybe staying at 11 and keeping the overtime budget, I don't know what the answer is, but we do owe it to the taxpayers to figure out what's the best value.
And, and it's, it's not, when we look at this, dropping 12 to 11, dropping 12, 10, there's another factor besides, besides the money factor here. It's what equipment can be put on the road. And that's something the chief is going to have to come up with, of what equipment can be put on the road if we're at 11 or versus 10.
And also, where do you fit them? Because you're at the max right now.
Yeah, we do have one additional room available if we were to go to 12, we do have the, the space to do it. Because I did ask that question when we were talking about it, I'm like, do we even have the ability? So we did, we did some homework and we have the ability to just put 12 up if we have, if we get to 12. We do have it.
Be tight.
Oh, yeah.
Be tight for X number of years, but.
All right. You good on this, the fire budget?
Yeah, go to the hard one, code enforcement, is that?
Yeah.
Got it all about it.
Code enforcement, for the most part.
It's 06.
It's level funded, we didn't do a lot with that department, it's been running pretty well. We left out the part-time secretary, we did not fill that position, we left it blank for now. Like we spoke, we have the software program, which seems to be being used quite a bit now, so the public is getting pretty good at using it. So the public is getting pretty good at using it. Um, our staff is getting pretty comfortable assisting them with it. Um, we've seen some pretty good successes with it, so we're pretty happy to have it. It certainly has done a lot of streamlining of operations within our, within that department, which is what we were hoping for and why we didn't fill the part-time secretary position. Um, but everything else that's in here is pretty much contractual, or just the basic operating for that department. I don't seem even glaring that, unless there's something that you all see that you want to talk about, I certainly can speak on it.
I think we're good, Chief. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
All right. We appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you much. And we've, uh, we decided to put, those issues are dead off, oh, we need a motion to put that-
Yeah, just put it on the table.
Send off?
Second.
For a date of 1/29?
Yeah.
Second by Nancy, Nancy Harrington motion, signed by Nancy Murphy.
Can we repeat the motion?
It's to table the proposed issuance of that.
Oh, okay.
So it's going to be January 29th meeting. All set? Holes in favor of the motions, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, 7-0-0.
Thank you.
Very good.
So we're all set?
Good.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Jennifer. Holes in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, 7-0-0.
Thank you.
Here we go.